We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by the nation under God, in the name of this law, will never be inadmissible for all.
Thank you, and if I could ask Councilor Maronis to read our mission statement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Silver City is the hub of an inclusive community settled within a small town that through guided growth honors and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage while facilitating jobs, health, and education resources such that the residents and visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area and high quality of life.
Thank you. Is my microphone working? Can you hear me now? You can fix it while I go do this. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Joshua Shelley present.
Don't hear that, Mayor.
Okay, well, we will forego that for a minute, and next up is Grant County Senior Olympics Team, and if I could have all of you here for the Senior Olympics, meet me at the podium.
I have a proclamation for you. Whereas the National Senior Olympics Organization, now known as the National Senior Games Association, was formed in 1985 in St. Louis, Missouri, and the first games were held in 1987 in St. Louis with 2,500 competitors. And whereas the National Senior Games Association supports and sanctions state organizations such as the New Mexico Senior Olympics so adults can participate in their state events year-round and keep them motivated to achieve greater value and quality in their lives by staying healthy, active, and fit. And whereas the New Mexico Senior Olympics features over 107 events in 28 different sports in 130-plus communities and 32 local game sites across the state to encourage a healthy lifestyle in mature adults ages 50 and over. Whereas the New Mexico Senior Olympics mission is to promote physical fitness for seniors statewide, provide year-round opportunities and motivation for adults ages 50 and over to participate in local, state, and national games. And whereas the Town of Silver City sponsored the Grant County Senior Olympics Team by providing them free use of the municipal swimming pool for training and competition. Whereas Grant County Senior Olympics Team had 87 participants ages 50 to 86, and 42 of those participants qualified to compete at the 2012 New Mexico Senior Olympics Summer Games in Las Cruces, New Mexico. And whereas Grant County Senior Olympics Team won 17 gold medals, 24 silver medals, 13 bronze medals, six fourth-place ribbons, and eight fifth-place ribbons in various events, and therefore have qualified for the 2013 Summer National Senior Games in Cleveland, Ohio. Now therefore, I, James R. Marshall, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby recognize and congratulate the 2012 Grant County Senior Olympics Team and each Olympian for their outstanding personal achievement in the 2012 New Mexico Senior Olympics Summer Games and wish them great success in future competitions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. In behalf of the Senior Olympics, we would like to present medals and a plaque to the city, Silver City. And can you guys come down so we can present you with medals and the plaque? Alex Brown, come up here. You're not gonna hide from us. And we want to present this to the Town of Silver City, the plaque, for doing this for us, and we appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to make another presentation. It's one of our senior citizen Olympics, and his name is Jim Baldwin. He was there for us in all kinds of events. He helped us quite a bit, so we would like to present him with a plaque and a ribbon and a shirt. Thank you. You did a good job. Appreciate it. Also, I'd like to introduce my telemates over back here. Would you raise your hand? Raoul Garieta, number one. Lou Heritson. Benza Pulvera. David Vias. Fred Graham. Tony Garcia. Gloria Bradford. Jimmy Santiago Avalos. Jim Baldwin. And Henry Morales. Thank you. Also, we would like to thank City Manager Alex Brown. I know we were having problems with the swimming pool. I think the pipes went down, they broke down. You know, if it wasn't for him, you know, we made other avenues to do something, go to Damien, so we can get this event going. But you know, he came through, Peter Peña, and they came through, and Patricia Pino. A congratulation and thank you for your help. And also Senator Howie Morales, Representative Rudy Martinez were both unable to attend. They send a special thank you for our support in allowing us the use of the city property for Senior Olympic local competition. A special thank to the Board of Directors, Fred Graham is here, David Vias, Carney Foye, Gloria Bradford, Beverly Moss, Elva Quimby, and Kimberly Neal. And also a special thanks to GRMC, Planktree, and Steph, Morningstar, Ambank, and all our sponsors. Our mission statement was, "New Mexico Senior Olympics is a 501(c)(3) organization that is dedicated to promoting healthy lifestyles for all seniors aged 50 years and older through education, fitness, and sporting events. Through Senior Olympics program, New Mexico Senior Olympics assists local games in achieving greater value and quality in the lives of local senior adults. Goals were to improve and maintain health and wellness of seniors adults 50 and over. Focus attention on the importance of regular exercise and constructive activities. To collaborate the vitality of life through example and create awareness of opportunities that promote a healthy lifestyle. To provide competition, athletics, and recreational experience at local, state, and national levels." We had a senior banquet this year, and it was, it was an awesome banquet. We had from 150 to 200. I thought we were only gonna have 40 people, but it turned out that we had a lot of people there, and you know, the board and myself and the seniors were there to help us out, make it a success. We had 40 participants attending, and were awarded medals and shirts and certificates. State Senator Howie Morales was there, State Representative Rudy Martinez, New Mexico Senior Olympic Director Cecilia Costa was there from Roswell as well, and guest speakers was Ernesto Ramos, founder of the Senior Olympics in 1979. That's when it got started in New Mexico, that was in Santa Fe. We started here in, on, let me see, 1980, and we started with 15 to 40 people, and you know, Beverly Moss was the other coordinator at one time, she said she was to 120, and now we're, I mean, we, the numbers are up there, you know. We did good numbers at the county and the state. Hopefully, we'll do good at the Nationals. Also, we had guest speakers as Carney Foye, the CEO, Brent Bentley, and myself, and then we had a guest speaker, and also we met with Grant County Commissioners. They also gave us a proclamation was given to us to the Grant County seniors. And I think we talked about the state Olympic summary, 50 participants, 13 gold, 22 silver, 10 bronze, and then we had maybe about 12 ribbons, fourth and fifth, which was awesome. All of these participants qualified to go to Nationals in Cleveland, Ohio. Unfortunately, not all qualifying events will be available at Nationals. Health Council was unable to set up a booth during the state as planned. Oldest female at the Olympics at state was 92-years-old. She got a goal, and we had our own goal. She was 86-years-old. She participated ping-pong, and our youngest was 50-years-old, got a goal. Participating not only locally, but the state level really brings many benefits, like any to know other participants from other parts of the state. It really pushes you to do your best, and the competition gets harder, and it is very entertaining, and you can see a lot of talent, and you can really see the benefit of staying active and shape. It is encouraging to see older people participate to do so well. They have stayed healthy because they have stayed busy. At this time, I want to take this time to thank all of you for all your support, time, and guidance that made it possible to have such a wonderful turnout. I'm telling you something about the Olympics there at Las Cruces. Local games from Grant, at Las Cruces recently attended the 212 Senior Olympic Games at New Mexico State University in Las Cruces, but there was a total of 1,232 participants in Las Cruces, and that was at New Mexico State. The games were held from July 24th to the 29th, and this was a qualifying year for athletes to advance to the National Senior Games planned for Cleveland, July 21st to August the 1st. And this is what we're gonna be working on, you know, we have all year, and hopefully we can get some people to go over there. Seniors attending the games truly experienced another great event where active older adults took the starting blocks with sense of Olympic spirit in hopes to win a medal and qualify for Nationals. There was over 26 individual sports, and they ran from Wednesday through Sunday with scheduling sometimes because some of the events were overlap, and athlete may have had to pick up or choose what sport they elect to advance to based on the winner's bracket. For a complete listing of all games result, visit the website at nmsO@newmexicoseniorylmpics.org. I just want to thank my senior boys back here, man, that they did a great job, you know, and I'm looking forward for Nationals, and I want to say, Raoul too, he wants to say something. Thank you.
Well, being one of the youngest seniors, they kind of made fun of me because Jim Baldwin beat me by 200 meters on the 800-meter race, so I thought I'd let everybody know. But what I'd like to state is, this is not only just Silver City, but Grant County and all the small municipalities, we're looking at me, but at Cliff, everybody participated. And hopefully that we could come up with a medal or two up in Nationals. But everybody joined together, helped out each other, and it was such a wonderful, wonderful time being together, and we were all united. Whenever you see a 90-year-old lady running a 400-meter and completing it, if that doesn't pump you up, I don't know what will. And I would like to introduce a gentleman back, I think he took off, Tony Garcia, I think you've seen him in the newspaper, pulling him out of retirement as a high school coach. Like I said, same outfit, the whole thing. He was very instrumental in helping us on the running and so on. I would like to make a statement here that this weekend, we had a very enormous softball tournament there at Baton Park of over 20 teams, and the merchants, the 60-year-old merchants took first in their division. And Lou is one of the participants of the merchants, and also the New Mexico Boomers took the Class B division, and we're not talking little walk in the park. It was hot, they did a heck of a good job, and once again, everybody organized, and thank you for the seniors. And I'm glad to be a senior. Thank you very much, and thank these gentlemen and these ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, Raoul. And I see all these guys, I want to see you guys next year.
I'm coming at you, there's chains and knots.
No, I was pointing, I was pointing at Joe Ray.
Thank you.
It's nice to see Mr. Baldwin get recognized for something positive, because he was my junior high, one of my junior high teachers, so whenever I do make a mistake or I make a decision that people don't agree with, I blame my teachers. So it's nice that you guys have a positive one there. Mr. Shelley show up yet? He did. Please, meet me at the podium, sir.
I have a proclamation. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of our youth through its many programs which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others. And whereas one of the major objectives in this scouting program is to develop citizenship through community involvement and addition, and in addition to working for citizenship merit badges, scouts are encouraged to participate in community service projects. And whereas 2012 is the 100th anniversary of the first Eagle Scout rank that was awarded to Arthur Eldred in 1912. And whereas Joshua Shelley is a member of Troop 110 Silver City, New Mexico, and has not only proven himself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America, but has attained the highest honor bestowed on a scout, the Eagle Scout Award. And whereas Joshua Shelley's Leadership Service Project that was done at the Silver High Tennis Court Complex in Silver City solved a serious erosion problem that was affecting the tennis courts. And whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership, quality, and commitment this young man has shown. Now therefore, I, James R. Marshall, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby recognize and congratulate Joshua Shelley, Eagle Scout, for his outstanding accomplishment of achieving this highest of scouting awards, which symbolizes the American ideal of good citizenship, and extend to him our deepest appreciation for all of his dedicated work and encourage him to continue his commitment to excellence. Congratulations, sir.
The next item on the agenda with action, there's nothing under public input, council comments, Councilor Maronis, would you like to start?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give kudos to Julie Morales and her crew for cleaning up an area down there on the end of Gold Street. I got a question for Julie, are you gonna put some apartments there? It looks nice, very, very nice, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cook.
I want to just say that the Silver City Clay Festival was a phenomenal success for its first inaugural year, and I want to thank Lee Gruber for her vision to blend her love of clay and our local cultural heritage into something so unique, which has become now another signature event for Silver City. And I just can't say how impressed I was. I went down to set up for a lecture downtown, and I couldn't find anywhere to park for the lecture, because there were so many people downtown on Saturday, on the 4th, and there were so many people walking around. It was really good to see that many people. And I also want to mention that that lecture was overflowing, it was about members pottering, about the new collection at the university museum, and the university museum after that got slammed by 50 people walking in the door on a Saturday afternoon in August, so it was really unusual, and we had, I think, just like the Silver City Museum, one of our huge visitation weekends ever because of the Clay Festival. So thank you to all the sponsors and collaborators, businesses, everyone who had anything to do with that, especially to Lee. I attended the National Night Out that the Silver City Police Department held last week. It was on Tuesday night, there, the mayor was there. It was great at Penny Park, and it was really nice to see all of the kids playing at Penny Park with their families. Not many people knew about the National Night Out, but I want to thank the Road Drive Neighborhood Watch Group, they're at all of those every year, and they turned out in force along with some other folks. Look for anything in the paper like that next year. It's a great event that the Silver City Police Department throws on, and they'll certainly work with your neighborhood to develop watch, neighborhood watch groups and other neighborhood groups. And I just wanted to let everybody know that the WNMU is, along with the Silver City Main Street, is hosting the Bash on Broadway this Friday. If you haven't noticed, we're starting to get students in. They'll really come in and force a move in on Thursday and Friday and Saturday over the weekend. And this Friday from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. down at the corner of Broadway and Bullard, there'll be a big bash with music and all sorts of events, and we hope that the community and all the staff and faculty at Western will join everybody along with the town to welcome back the new and also our returning students. And preceding, or just before that, at 6 o'clock will be a state of university address by Dr. Shepherd at 6:00 p.m. at the Silco. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Secretary Dominguez with the Department of Transportation who responded very rapidly to our request to resurface Hudson Street, and then things kind of took a turn for the worse, and the striping was done. Like to thank Jim Coats for helping me draft a letter to the Department of Transportation to get the striping redone. One, you notice that there's no crosswalks on Hudson Street anymore. The bike lanes are about two feet at the most, and some of the intersections don't align. There was a, it had to be like a 30, 40-foot right turn lane without a lane just south of Broadway Street. So actually, as I sat down at this meeting tonight, I opened up a letter, there is a plan to re-stripe Hudson Street that they're working on implementing now, so we've already got a response from them, and they're on top of it. The striping was not done toward their plans, however, it's gonna create an issue because it was done, so they have to eradicate the current stripes. So when they go back and do that, bear with them, they'll, they'll get it right. The next thing I wanted to announce, I just spoke to P&amp;M right before this meeting, and they have announced and informed their employees today that as of September 17th, the Silver City P&amp;M Payment Center will only be open on Mondays and Tuesdays. So if you must pay your electric bill at the office, Monday and Tuesday will be the only days that they will be there to collect it. The Western Union, that you can make a payment for P&amp;M via Western Union, and that will remain free for now. And other than that, we've got a really full agenda. Anybody else need any?
I just want to comment, it's nice to see the lights going up at the corner of 12th and Pope, but I notice they have really long arms, or what do you call them? I don't know if they're called arms, but the signal I noticed for the left-hand turn lane going from 12th onto Pope is way over, above the, it's above the east, the westbound traffic lane on, on the other side of the street, so it's in a really weird position. I'm not sure that, today I was kind of staring at them, not going, which one are we supposed to look at? Because I have a feeling that we're gonna have drivers kind of trying to figure out where the traffic lights are because of the way they're positioned right now.
Peter and the engineers, and find out if, well, they were built to current standards for the light poles. The other ones were old, really pretty old poles, so I'll find out and make sure that everything is according to current standards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council from July 24th, 2012.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council of July 24th, 2012.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it if you agree.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council from July 24th, 2012. Is there any discussion? There's a motion, a second, no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under reports, and I'm gonna waver just a little bit and let the chief introduce a guest that he's invited, and she's on a schedule and needs to get moving.
Mayor, City Council, thank you. Just real quick, Kim Porter from Safer, New Mexico, is gonna give a short presentation on distracted driving. Again, she's gotta leave, so get this up front and get it done, and if you have any questions for.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Council members. I just want to bring some attention to the fact of distracted driving. The federal government is considering passing a law so that no one can be on either hands-held or hand-free cellphone use while they're driving a vehicle. I think it's very important that 25 to 30 percent of all fatal accidents in motor vehicles are the result of distracted driving, and of all the distractions such as eating and falling asleep and grooming, cellphone use certainly is number one for fatalities. It's a fairly heartbreaking thing to hear the stories. I personally have been hit by somebody who was talking on their cellphone while driving, so I know it's very frustrating to see that it was really a senseless type of accident. It's certainly one of the most dangerous distractions, and I think part of the reason that cellphone driving is so dangerous is that, and it doesn't matter if it's hands-free or hands-held. They found that the whole National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has found that what happens is that people become more and more tunnel vision as they are on the cellphone. The longer they're on the phone, the more they're not using their peripheral vision. People usually drive and they scan from left to right if they're in an area that they don't know well, and they stop scanning. They're, all they're doing is they're trying to keep in their lane, and they're right here, their focus is just trying to keep in that lane, and of course, they're usually not capable of doing that if they're dialing. Takes a couple of seconds to drive and dial that number. Very disheartening to see that that's occurring. Lot of people that, if they're on the cellphone- Lot of people that, if they're on the cellphone, the longer they're engaged on the cellphone, the more involved they become in that conversation, and the more their foot comes off the gas pedal. So, now they're slowing down and they're an impediment to traffic. That's a very dangerous situation as well. National Safety Council has found that not only are people using that tunnel vision, but they're also, they're far more distracted on a cellphone than they would be if they were talking to the person next to them. It's the fact that the person is far away and you're focusing on someone who isn't in the car with you that makes a huge difference in the number of accidents that we see. I think that most of us would agree that the single most dangerous thing that we do every day, generally speaking, is to drive. And it's a cooperative endeavor. Everybody out there is supposed to be following the rules and staying in their lane so that we can all be safe, and we're not cooperating when we're on the cellphone. In fact, we're so distracted that it's as, we're as compromised as if we'd had two drinks or two shots of eighty-proof. Now, if I had two shots of eighty-proof alcohol, I'd be at point oh eight, so I'd be over the legal limit. So, I might as well just be drunk and driving, which is certainly against the law. Now, people that would never think about drinking and driving, well, they won't think twice about getting on that cellphone. It's, one-third of all drivers actually use the cellphone while they're driving. It is extremely dangerous. It is the number-one distraction for fatalities that we see in this country. I think every time that we get on the cellphone, we are actually playing roulette, and it's just a matter of, you can beat the odds for so long, and we see other people doing it, and we're capable of doing it, and as a result, we feel like, oh, well, I can throw the dice and make it one more time. And people can usually get away with that for a certain period of time until they lose. And unfortunately, most people that are on cellphones and have accidents, they're involved in single-car accidents, or they rear-end people, so other people are involved. Other people have lifelong injuries as a result of that. You know, if we're driving, if we're going sixty miles per hour, then we're going eighty-eight feet per second. That's pretty fast. Takes several seconds to make a decision and to start to act on that decision, and then you take another second to pull your attention away from the cellphone conversation, realize that the issue has happened, and the traffic has changed, or there's an emergency situation, and we've already gone three hundred feet. That's pretty scary to think that you would take your eyes off the road for three hundred feet at sixty miles per hour, but it only takes a couple of seconds. I really think that it is important that we have this law throughout the country to ban cellphone use while driving vehicles. Obviously, the texting is far more dangerous, and you're far more distracted if you're texting than if you're on the cellphone, but there's, they can find absolutely no difference between the handheld and the hands-free. It's the fact that you're distracted, that you're talking to someone else, that person isn't even right there in the car. And then you take, when you take a call, usually people wanna give you information, or they want to get information from you, so that may mean that you're pulling other items out, and you're even further distracted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for her? Counselor Buzin. I believe she has some questions for you.
Excuse me, I have a question for you. I need you to come up to the podium, please. So, you indicated that the federal government was planning to move forward on banning the use of handheld devices and hands-free devices. And can I finish? Hold on for just a minute. So, that's what I wrote down, and that's what I heard you say about at the beginning. And so, my question to you is if car manufacturers are integrating hands-free cellphone devices into their vehicles, like in my vehicle, how does the federal government plan to stop that? Because you are not gonna be able to, I mean, there are many cars that have that integrated in and wired into the car itself, and I think at this point, I mean, car manufacturers are even going further, Toyota's doing Intune, I mean, there's a lot of other different sorts of things that are being integrated into vehicles today to address consumer demand. So, I see it as, while I understand what you're saying, and I had already mentioned at the last meeting we had about this regarding, I think that distraction for cellphone use is the same whether it's hands-free or handheld, I don't see how this ban's gonna be possible given the way cars are being manufactured today. So, I'm not sure how the federal government plans to move forward on it.
Counselor, I'm not really sure that I can answer how they're going to do that. I know that the fact that companies are making money off of these hands-free devices that they have in the cars is, that's a motivation of the companies. I also know that they now have on the market chips so that you can have your children, their phones will not be engaged if they're going five miles per hour, their phone is going five miles per hour. So, there are certainly items out there that we can buy, that we can use illegally if it happened to come to that. All I know is that the loss of life that's directly attributed to the cellphone use and the fact that it is repeatedly found to be the number-one distraction for people in terms of fatalities, that that's playing a strong role in the government's discussion of that possibility. So, I think they are considering it. I don't think that they have passed that by any month.
The next item under reports is an update on the implementation of the town's Climate Action Plan two thousand and eleven progress and report on the town's water and electric usage in two thousand and ten, eleven by members of the mayor's Climate Protection Agreement Citizens Advisory Committee. Shelby.
Mr. Mayor and councilors, I'm told there's a microphone here for the TV that I need to stand close to, so I'll try to talk into both. I'm Shelby Hallmark, I'm relatively new to Silver City, so it's a pleasure to be here. And Denise Smith and I are members of the mayor's advisory council on climate change, that's not the full name, but I can't ever remember what it is, so it's close enough. We are here to report on the update with regard to the Climate Action Plan that was produced by the committee back in two thousand and eight and nine, and that plan established goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the town, by the town government and in the community surrounding. And the goals were basically two large goals, one for a fifteen percent reduction in the energy use slash CO2 emissions by two thousand and fifteen, and one to reduce by the same fifteen percent those emissions in the community as a whole. So, to do that, we would have to reduce, the town, the government of Silver City would have to reduce CO2 emissions by about fifteen hundred tons per year, and the community by about forty thousand tons per year. So, it's a fairly significant goal. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the status of how we stand with regard to those large goals, and then I'm gonna turn the microphone over to Denise Smith, who will talk about the thirteen specific recommendations that the Climate Action Plan contained to try to reach these overarching goals. Now, as you see in the slide here, and I don't know if folks in the back can see it, but basically, we have not complete information with regard to emissions for the community as a whole. The data that we do have doesn't necessarily match up with the baselines that were in the C A T back in two thousand and eight, and in some cases, we have estimation issues. We have to do, we have to make some educated guesses about how to assess the actual usage. But as you see there, on a general, we can, so we can't make a specific statement that we are at a certain exact percentage point of reduction, or increase, but we can say is that with regard to electricity used, P&amp;M tells us it's up since two thousand and eight by a small percentage. Gasoline, based on franchise tax receipts, is also up since two thousand and seven, and natural gas, according to the information we have, is up substantially, but that's only from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven, those are the only years we have. You'll recall that two thousand and eleven was a very cold winter, so that may explain that fluctuation. So, bottom line for the community as a whole, we're going the wrong direction. Our emissions are actually up, not down, and that's gonna require more work. With respect to the town government, however, we have good progress to report. Overall, energy use and CO2 emissions are down by five percent for the entire town government, and that is close to what should be accomplished if we're gonna reach that fifteen percent reduction by two thousand and fifteen. So, the town deserves to give itself some credit. You probably can't read these small numbers in the back, but this breaks it out by the different energy sources, and you see the five percent total for the change from the baseline years to current, and that includes electric, which is a three percent reduction from two thousand and eight. That's a good start, and I believe we'll be leaping ahead in two thousand and thirteen when the wastewater solar array goes online, so I think we can say there's a good trajectory here. Natural gas is way up also, again, that's probably a result of the cold winter in two thousand and eleven. One last remark would be that gasoline and diesel used by the town are both down substantially, and that's across all the departments, police, fire, sanitation, et cetera, and that shows, it seems to me, that we have some thoughtful department chiefs working on this issue and saving money. Okay, I'm gonna turn the microphone at this point over to Denise Smith, who's gonna talk about the thirteen individuals' recommendations for actions to reduce carbon that the plan had.
Thank you, Shelby, Mayor, councilors. There, I'm just gonna quickly go through the thirteen recommendations, 'cause, you know, we could belabor them for a long time, like Shelby and I have for months now, but let me just go through these briefly. Number one goal was to the creation of the Office of Community Sustainability. Well, that became the Joint Office of Sustainability. That goal was met through EECBG funding. It's been operating since April two thousand and ten. Goal number two was solar energy installation, and this goal has been partially met because we have, we're close to getting a one-megawatt solar array for the wastewater treatment plant. Construction is scheduled for the fall of this year. Goal number three was energy-efficient retrofits for the town of Silver City buildings, and we feel like that's partially met as well, and we're on track to meet the target. We did the Joint Office of Sustainability, did fluorescent tube lighting in the four highest-energy-use buildings in town, so Town Hall, City Annex, and Museum, and the Public Safety Building. We also did some CFL lighting in some of the buildings, so those are saving the town money. And in your report, I'm sorry, Shelby, did you? This is what you have in your packet, and we go into much more detail in this, so you can read that sometime when you're, you know, we won't say. Goal number four, so that was energy efficiency and sustainability education in the greater Silver City area, and we feel like that goal is partially met as well. Through the Energy Sense Program, we did in-house education for over eight hundred homes. We also do presentations at community events. There's the Sun Chaser Program, the Viva Verdi Guide, and there's been a curriculum for energy efficiency education that was developed by GRIP and Aldo Leopold High School. That's also available statewide now. We did really good on compact fluorescent light distribution. Six thousand, six hundred plus CFLs were distributed in Grant County and the greater Silver City area. On goal number six, this was a photovoltaic panel-covered parking structure. That's also been completed. And goal number seven is a Silver City interloop and walk proposal, and this goal has been partially met as well. Now, the Grant County Health Promotion Team, the, what is it, the bag and the wag group, and our town plan are all working to increase the connectivity through trails and bicycle-friendly Number eight was a street lighting plan, and this was to upgrade our streetlights to more energy-efficient lighting. P&amp;M owns those lights, we have recently been talking to them, maybe we'll be able to make some progress on that in the future, but right now, we have not made any progress. And goal number nine was LED traffic signals, and this goal has been largely met. The ongoing savings from the lights that have been switched over to LED is about ten thousand a year for the town. Goal number ten is creative renewable energy local financing structure, and there are, there's a local working group working on that, and Senator Bingaman's Task Force, the Four County Green Energy and Jobs Task Force is also working on that, but there's more work to go on that. Number eleven is Town of Silver City Green Standards for Building, and this goal has not been met, there were no changes in two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven. The town follows the state standards and uses a state building inspector. Goal number twelve was a plastics policy, and this has not been met either. Goal thirteen, municipal fleet conversion to biodiesel. This one, there was no progress on. So, for a summary, I'm gonna turn it back over to Shelby, if you wouldn't mind.
All right, to wrap up of the specific goals we met for, or partially met for, we made no progress on, and as I said earlier, the town's CO2 emissions were down by five percent, which is a very good start, and on track to meet the goal if we can make progress on the other, the remaining activities that we need, that we have not made progress on. The committee is focused on trying to see what we can do to help the town and the community address the pieces of the plan that haven't been addressed so far. And the big pieces are the greenways, the bikeability/walkability goal, street lighting plan, plastics policy, which would be to address the question of plastic bags, and continuing retrofit and other kinds of efficiency activities. Now, one of the things that the committee is working on now is to expand its horizons to look at the whole issue of adaptability, sustainability, in the face of growing changes in climate that are with us now and are going to be with us in terms of hotter, drier, and more extreme climate. Those are very important issues, but we also believe that we can continue to make progress on the original items that I've just listed here and address those adaptability issues as we get hotter. For example, the greenways is clearly an area that addresses the need for more trees, more opportunities for people to use the outdoors, maybe make the town more attractive and a magnet for people to come here because it's an attractive and vibrant city. So, we will, the committee is gonna continue to work on those issues, and we'll be coming forward with new proposals on those, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have about the two thousand and eleven update. Looks like the written report was comprehensive. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Brown, any report? Chief Reynolds? Is the fire department still here? Mr. Russell, no?
Mr. Russell, no? All right. You need to. Councilor Bedison?
Mr. Mayor, I'm ready for a short break.
Mr. Mayor, I have a second, sir.
There's a motion and a second that we take a short break. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're in recess.
I'm out of practice. We'll call this meeting back to order, and the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, entitled, "Approval/Disapproval of Ordinance Number 1206 and Ordinance Amending the Town's Official Zoning Map by Rezoning from Their Current Zoning to Historic Downtown Commercial Numerous Tracks of Land in the Silver City, Chihuahua Hill, Blacks Addition, and North Addition Historic Overlay Districts." The map amendment zone change includes the following properties: all of blocks 8, 19, 20, 31, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 105, 106, 127, 128, 141, 142, 163, 164, 179, 180, and 200 of the Fraser Survey of the Town of Silver City. Block 9 exclusive of the vacated portion of Bullard Street of the Fraser Survey of the town site of Silver City. The south half of blocks 99, 100, 101, 102, 103, and 104 of the Fraser Survey of the town site of Silver City. The east half of block 7, 10, 18, 21, 30, 104, 129, 140, 165, 178, and 201 of the Fraser Survey of the town site of Silver City. The north half of block 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30 of the Fraser Survey of the town site of Silver City. The northwest quarter of block 178 of the Fraser Survey of the town site of Silver and the south half of blocks 2 and 45 of Black Subdivision. City. Those parcels in the southeast portion of the rezoned area within an area of the Fraser Survey of the town site of Silver City delineated on the north by Spring Street, on the west Everybody get that? by Bullard Street, on the south by a line extending from the south side of San Vicente Want me to repeat it? Street, and on the east by a line extending from the east side of Main Street. Such parcel, parcels being those with the following Grant County, New Mexico property The applicant is the Town of Silver City. The town will serve as the hearing board, and I as mayor will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had ex parte discussion with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communication from any party to this case?
No.
Hearing none, you're all qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise and come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate
Please raise your right hand and speak after me. I state your name.
I, Peter Russell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
In the matter before this council.
In the matter before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
And your penalty.
And your penalty.
Thank you then. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken by the director, by PNZ Commission, or by town staff. Then the applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of applicant's case. The applicant, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief, and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witnesses, the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, "Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?" I hope somebody's going to talk. Mr. Coates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I just want to compliment you, Mr. Mayor, for such eloquence in your recitation of the ordinance. I've not heard it read so well. Thank you. As you mentioned, this is a fairly lengthy zone change request, and it is to create a new zone, which was actually put forth in the Land Use and Zoning Code in 2010, the revisions to that. Currently, the zones in the town look at, look like this map here, and we have, the red is the current commercial district, and there, that has historically been the only commercial zoning that we have in the town. And the Land Use Code of 2010 created several new zones to, to make the commercial district more flexible and applicable within different various parts of towns and to more reflect the use in the towns. One of the zones that were, was created is the Historic Downtown Commercial, and that was for the basic area around the downtown area and the commercial areas within the historic districts. The Historic Downtown Commercial District was actually intended to accommodate a mix of commercial uses, serving residents and visitors, mixed-use buildings and residential buildings in the historic central business core, and to provide a variety of building sizes compatible with the character of the Silver City Historic District. The district encourages a high level of vitality through diverse activities conveniently accessible to pedestrians. In order for the town to actually change its zoning map, its official zoning map, we needed to present to you a proposal of an area in which to create the new Historic Downtown Commercial District. And the area that we're looking at is the red area from 10th Street down to about San Vicente, a little bit further, on Bullard, from Main Street over as far as Black Street, and the red area within it. All of that is currently zoned commercial, or there has been a few spot zoning changes to fit within the Historic Downtown Commercial area, such as these little places here and here, that you, as the council, have approved for those spot zones to make the zoning for individual properties a little bit more flexible. That was the purpose of the downtown, or Commercial Downtown Historic Zone, was that there are a lot of uses in the downtown commercial core that are residential, but it's all zoned commercial. So we wanted to take a look at ways that we could make more flexible and reflect better the historic character, as well as the uses of the properties as it is. The purpose of the request to change was to change the category of just one commercial zoning to several, one of which is the Historic Downtown Commercial, and it was created specifically for the historic districts by the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010. And it's to incorporate Historic Downtown Commercial District into the official zoning map, and so it will more closely reflect the actual property uses in the subject area, and to resolve problems for non-conforming properties, problems that include financing, insurance, and replacement, and it would also decrease the need for spot zoning in the subject area. The proposed, the proposed zoning that changed is this area here, the lighter color, and as you can see, that only reflects a change within what was already zoned commercial. It does not reach into any of the residential areas. The point down at the southeast side, that was an industrially-zoned area, but it was, there were some properties right there that were added to the historic district in April of this year, just as we were putting this proposal together, and at the bequest, at the request of the landowners there, we included it into the commercial zoning too, because the properties were already in a commercial use rather than industrial. That's why we added those little pieces right at that point into the request for the zone change. The benefits to the owners are is to provide more flexibility in property use, to allow residential as-a-use. It makes residential finance and insurance rates for residentially-used properties more easily obtained, and the replacement enlargement of structures are facilitated when a structure has a conforming use. I threw this into this picture here, into the presentation, because I wanted you to understand why the ordinance was so lengthy. These are blocks and various parcels. You have the, all the property codes from the county are in this area, because the unsurveyed portion of the Fraser Survey of the Town of Silver City doesn't have, wasn't planted as blocks or lots, and so the only way to really describe it is with the commercial property codes. These various blocks are going, that there's changes along lot lines or along streets, but we wanted to make sure that you understood that we are staying within the commercial zoning right now, and the people at 300 feet around the, the subject area have been notified four times now of the change, not to mention the opportunity to go to this meeting and to others, as well as reading it in the paper that there was meetings happening. So, we've had very little conversation with people that have had concerns about the proposed change. Primarily, it has been people on the edges, through there and around here, wishing that they could be added as well, rather than taken out of the proposed change, because people see that there's some additional flexibility, their property might be, right now, they might, they might want to have a commercial use, and they are right on the margin, so they, we, they've talked with us about potentially adding on later to the edges. And the district boundaries right now, oops, as proposed, are the same as the commercial zone within the historic districts, except for the industrial area right at the southeast corner. And as proposed, the Historic Downtown Commercial District does not extend into residential A or residential B zones, but following the adoption of the proposed Historic Downtown Commercial District, boundaries may be adjusted, or as requested by the town and/or individuals or collaborating property owners. We have had one group of property owners already wishing to look at several block area adjacent to the change that we're proposing, and so we're already looking at ways we can start adjusting this if people wish us to do so. But what we wanted to do right now was just get the historic areas with commercial zoning into the new district of the Historic Downtown Commercial. The areas that are dotted are the historic districts. You can see that we didn't include all of the historic districts, just that, those areas that are in the commercial area of the historic district. The predominant historic district that's covered, of course, is the Silver City Historic This is a map or an aerial view of those areas that were recently added to the historic It's an interesting bit of property, much of it owned by the Kennedy family at the end of Bullard Street. And the Kennedys were the ones who asked us to add it to the, to our proposal, after they came to a meeting at the SILCO that we had for people in the surrounding neighborhood. For the council to find the proposal approvable, the, you need to find that the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purpose of the Land Use Code. The proposed amendment responds to changed conditions, such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use, or further studies that have been completed since adoption of the Land Use Code. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the code. At the June meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission found that findings 1, 2, 4, and 7 all met the conditions for approving or recommending to the council that this proposal be approved. Are there any questions?
I have a question. You, you mentioned adding, what's essentially, a group of the Kennedy property. And the overall principle is basically, one is the remapping, since we've done a new Land Use Code. Second is to eliminate some of the spot zoning that was within that area. Third is, it enhances the flexibility in the, in a mixed-use area. However, when Lot 7 on, which you're probably familiar with Lot 7, it's a letter from Pollock's that's in our packet, we're still, by doing this and not including Lot 9, 11, 13, and 15, we're still setting ourselves up for a future hearing regarding this was essentially one property owner's parcel.
The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this land use code without lowering the standards of the code. At the June meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission found that findings one, two, four, and seven all met the conditions for approving, or recommending to the council that this proposal be approved. Are there any questions?
I have a question. You mentioned adding, what's essentially, a group of the Kennedy property. And the overall principle is basically, one is the remapping, since we've done a new land use code. Second is to eliminate some of the spot zoning that was within that area. Third is, it enhances the flexibility in a mixed-use area. However, when Lot 7 on, which you're probably familiar with Lot 7, it's a letter from Pollock's that's in our packet, we're still, by doing this and not including Lot 9, 11, 13, and 15, we're still setting ourselves up for a future hearing regarding this was essentially one property owner's parcel.
Because it cut across their property lines. We took the commercial area that was already zoned, the zone already cut across their property line. Because the zoning has been done through the middle of a block, like people's backyards if the lots were not overlapping from one side of the block to the other. So, they were concerned that, one, they weren't going to be in the same zone, and this was a concern that several people had that were along, especially along that space between Market and Kelly Street. And they were also, I think, from the reading their letter, they apparently thought that they were going to be zoned out of a residential use if they became Historic Downtown Commercial. When I explained that they, that they would actually have more flexibility with the new zone, that they would not be zoned out of being a residential property, they did, they no longer protested. Whether they were still unhappy, I haven't heard. They didn't say one thing or another. They are not the only property, especially in the Historic District, that the mixtures of lot here to lot there cuts across the middle of the blocks. The middle of the blocks historically have been chosen as district, zoning district lines because of one planning theory, that you want to change your zones not on the street level, or not at the street level, so that you don't have a zone on one side of the street and a different zone on the other. So, most of the town's zone lines were drawn along the back fence, as it were, which happens to cross some people's property lines. We didn't, we didn't want to jump into rezoning, or rezoning requests on residential until we at least took care of the properties that were already zoned commercial in that Historic District.
And leaving Lot 7 out of this proposal would have left one, well, one-fifth of just that property as zone commercial, and the rest of it's zoned residential B. So, you end up with two purposes and different financing compromise. Where adding Lot 7 into this proposal, you're still having two different zones, but their financing would be okay?
Their financing would be okay, because it's, right now, Zone 1 is zoned, Lot 7 is zoned commercial, and the rest of it is zoned residential. Their residential property, they could get zoning, or they could get financing on residential property, which is what they were, they indicated their biggest concern was, was not being able to continue getting residential zoning on their commercial property, which now they will actually be able to get with the new zone. It's, that lot-line separation of zoning on, from, that overlaps an ownership is a difficult issue, and we face that throughout, especially Chihuahua Hill and Silver City Historic District, because so many ownership histories have not actually stayed on the traditional lot-line. There's been a lot of mixture, there's places that there might be a little jagged triangle that now is going to be zoned Historic Downtown Commercial, even though it used to just be zoned commercial, and then another piece would have been zoned residential already. And it's, it's hard to start making jagged lines, though we're hoping that we can start looking more closely at the definition of the lines along the way.
So, one of the issues that we tried to deal with, because this is very complicated, and there's so many parcels involved, we did not change where the commercial line lies. If the commercial line divided a parcel that was comprised of several lots, it still divides the parcel. We have not changed where the commercial line lies. We recognize the issue, however, that there are people that would like to bump out a little bit and become part of that commercial district. That's especially true along Market Street. So, we have made a commitment to getting the zone established at the scale that's appropriate, and then we will do all the amendments that people are interested in to unify their properties. We'll go through the same process of, you know, notifying people at 300 feet, et cetera. So, the effort now is to do something on a complex issue that's fairly clear-cut, that does not change any of the existing lines, with the exception of that little piece in the southeast corner where the industrial was. And then we will amend the edges as people request.
I understand that. I just really struggle that, well, for seven years, we've been having hearings on, for a significant portion, based on a map that was poorly done before any of us were here. To continue to use those poorly drawn lines to go through and remap, we're just setting ourselves up to do this over and over and over again, where, you know, if we just look at this property, we could have just bumped in to the-
There were dozens of other properties in the same boat who have the same interest. And there are people that are opposed to seeing any residential property whatsoever go into a commercial designation. So, you open up a much more complicated scenario. And so, we recognize that the work isn't done, but the bulk of the need will be addressed through this. And then we will work on those edges, and there'll be people for and people against, but if you try to introduce changing the zoning category, especially for residential, then you will pull in opposition, and it'll become much more complicated.
One, it wasn't important enough for anybody to show up to testify against it. So, other than the evidence that's in the packet, I don't want to make a big deal about it. However, the land use code, as I believe you stated before, allows individual neighborhoods to maintain some uniformity, as well as it allows the council to set the vision for the town. And that's one of the issues I have with the rural zoning, is we use that as a placeholder when it has connotations of cows and horses and all other things. I really don't like that, that term for a placeholder. I think we have to go forward, and at some point, we have to, we have to have the political will to set a vision for the town and the shape of the town. And it's not always popular, and it's really, really difficult sometimes, but that's what we're tasked with doing. And that's kind of where I'm getting at with, with using a bad map before to recreate a new map that's better. I struggle with that as a philosophy going forward. However, the, most of the input that has been received on this application is positive in requesting expansion. There's been, there's a few comments on how things could be done different. That's, that's quite acceptable. And I fully understand this is a monumental task, and we saw kind of a glimpse of how monumental when we, when we redrafted the land use code and some of the problems that will be coming before us in the future. So, I appreciate the work. Any other comments? Would you like to change from staff report to the applicant and present a case?
May I address your comments?
You absolutely may.
Thank you. Moving forward with this, whether you pass this tonight or not, we are already looking at another proposal to bring forward to you that is going to be more complicated, will probably not fall on straight lot-lines, because the lots are so wavy. And we're going to try to throw some balloons out there to see how the neighborhoods in areas that are not affected by this particular proposal will perceive looking at more flexible zoning in smaller areas around this zone. So, I appreciate your comments that you want to set a vision, because it will make it easier for us to move forward, knowing that we might have the support of the council when we're, when we're looking at ways to make it work better rather than the old way. So, thank you.
Does that conclude your case in chief?
Read the findings again.
No.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in opposition to the application? Sign them, Jim, stand up one more time. Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?
No, sir.
Does any member of the hearing board have any questions for any witness?
No.
Is the hearing board prepared to consider the application and render its decision? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 1206 and ordinance amending the town's official zoning map by rezoning from the current zoning to Historic Downtown Commercial, numerous tracts of land in Silver City, Chihuahua Hill, Blacks Edition, and North Edition Historic Overlay Districts. The map amendment, zone change, includes the following properties. All of the blocks of 8, 19, 20, 31, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 105, 106, 127, 128, 141, 142, 163, 164, 179, 180, and 200 of the Fraser Survey of the Town of Silver City. Block 9, exclusive of the vacated portion of Bullard Street, at the Fraser Survey at the townsite of Silver City. The south half blocks, 99, 100, 101, 102, 103, and 104, at the Fraser Survey at the townsite of Silver City. The east block, I'm sorry, the east half of blocks 7, 10, 18, 21, 30, 104, 129, 140, 165, 178, and 201, at the Fraser Survey at the townsite of Silver City. The north half of blocks 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30, at the Fraser Survey at the townsite of Silver City. The northwest quarter of block 178, at the Fraser Survey at the townsite of Silver City. Those parcels in the southeast portion are the rezoned area within an area at the Fraser Town Survey at the townsite of Silver City delineated, wow, on the north, on the north by Spring Street, on the west by Bullard Street, on the south by a line extending from the south side of Sunday Center Street, and on the east by a line extending from the east side of Main Street. Such parcels being, those will are following Grand County New Mexico Property Codes, 3-081-103-198-375, and 3-081-103-193-425, all of blocks 1 and 44 of Blacks subdivision, and the south half blocks of 2 and 45 of Blacks subdivision. The applicant is the Town of Silver City under the findings of- Number one, the proposed amendment is substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion, and would like to add some discussion.
Let the record reflect that there's a motion as published, and a second. Is there any discussion?
With your comment? No.
No comment? There is a motion and a second, no discussion, to approve ordinance number 1206 as published, as read, and I'm not going to read it again, with finding number one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Ray.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ray.
C.
Councilwoman Cook.
Aye.
Councilperson Benson.
Aye.
Motion carries, and that concludes this here. Sorry, I'm a little aggressive with the gavel. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of ordinance number 1207, an ordinance amending section 12-6-12.18, prohibitive activities while driving of the New Mexico Uniform Traffic Code adopted as a Silver City traffic ordinance in chapter 50, section 50-1 of the municipal code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, Councilor Ray.
I'm all, I'm all shook up as soon as I read this here.
Do you have a request for it?
Do you have a request for it? I would like to introduce an NOI on the usage of the cell phones here in Silver. I guess I can read the proposed, the following changes on the NOI.
Explain to people what you're trying to do with this NOI first.
I think that I've done a study here, and I hope that the council has done a study also on the measures of using the cell phones while driving or texting. I surely, I believe that it's not in the best interest of the public to be doing this. I did a study with some of the law, I'm sorry, some of the other city throughout here in New Mexico, and I got a good report, and I want to propose an NOI for the banning of cell phones here within the town limits. Boy, I'm nervous. I would like to propose the following changes to, at the NOI. Can I do that now?
You may.
In the first sentence, I would substitute the words "drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle."
When the, in the, therefore.
For the existing wording which states "drive a vehicle or bicycle," I suggest this change to make it clear that this ordinance applies to all types of motorized and pedal vehicles. Also, in the first sentence, I would change the reference to "town, street, or roadway" to "street or roadway located within the town." I suggest this change so that it is clear that highways 90 and 180 within the town are covered by the ordinance. I also suggest removing exemption for law enforcement and government since there will be an exemption to request roadside assistance to report an emergency or crime being committed. And this exemption will apply to all persons, including law enforcement and government personnel. I don't believe any additional exemptions for government or law enforcement is necessary or appropriate. I also suggest that the use of hands-free devices should be permitted as long as there is no manual dialing or data input or driving. These changes are considered, I'm sorry, these changes are consistent with my belief that texting and reading text while driving presents a danger to both drivers and pedestrians within the town. Accordingly, the text should read, number six. Drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing, talking, or entering data into a handheld cellular device or radio telephone or reading data, therefore, therefrom, while the vehicle is in motion upon a street or roadway within the town. Calling 911 while driving in order to request roadside assistance or to report an emergency or crime being committed shall be exempt from this regulation. Use of hands-free communication device whose operation does not require manual dialing nor manual data input or driving shall also be exempt. I move that section 12-6-12.18 be amended by adding a new subsection six which shall Drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing, talking, or entering data into a handheld cellular device or radio telephone or reading data, therefore, from, while the vehicle is in motion upon a street or roadway within the town. Calling 911 while driving in order to request roadside assistance or to report an emergency or crime being committed shall be exempt from this regulation. Use of hands-free communication device whose operation does not require manual dialing nor manual data input while driving shall be, shall also be exempt.
I second the motion to amend NOI 1207. There's a motion to amend, is there a second?
I second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion and a second to amend. Is there any discussion? Councilor Maron.
Mr. Mayor. This is a very interesting ordinance proposal. Instinctively, right off the bat, when we first looked at this a month ago, seemed like a slam dunk. I was, it seemed like something that should happen, absolutely, without question. What's happened over this last month is had an opportunity to do some research, look at some things, and I'm still, you know, there's a part of me that strongly believes that this is something that would be for the good of the public, but I do, I would like to see some debate, I'd like to see some answers on some questions I have, just to see how motivated I am on which direction I want to vote. Some of the items that I would like to talk about that were of interest to me is, you know, what are, what are the current laws in the state of New Mexico? Currently, already, all state vehicles, anybody in a state vehicle, or driving a state vehicle, I should say, they're not allowed to use cell phones of any, of any, at all. That's been a question of some constituents on the fact that they see a lot of government agents driving vehicles, using cell phones. It's already illegal for them, that should be something that should be stopped. Some of the citizens I'd be most concerned about are the youth, and currently, all provisional licenses, anybody with a provisional license, anybody with learner's permit, they are not allowed under state law to use a cellphone in any form. So that's, that's already good. Going further on the state issue, just last year, the House voted for a complete ban of cellphone use, something like 58 to 7. The Senate committees, the Judiciary Committee in the Senate voted 6-0 to pass it to the floor. For some reason, it got postponed and didn't get voted on, but there seems to be strong evidence and support that this may become a state law anyways. We've already heard some testimony that this may become a federal law. And to me, it somewhat begs the question, should we wait? Should we see where those debates go? Is there, is there any reason that we should beat their efforts too hastily, too quickly, just to do this and then have in six months it be a state law anyways? May or may not be of value. Also, looking at some of the towns, Las Cruces being the most recent town to put in this, to put in a full ban. Incidentally, has been written as, by, by the papers and by, and comments there to those papers, is grossly unenforced and grossly not abide by. There's still a tremendous amount of cellphone use in Las Cruces, and it seems like nobody cares, they don't, there doesn't seem to be too much of an effort to enforce it, and citizens don't seem to be complaining about that fact to any great level. Similar to Las Cruces is Santa Fe has a, has a complete ban, and theirs has been in existence for a little bit longer, so they have a little bit more history and a lot more enforcement. What I found interesting is there's been a couple efforts to undo the ban. They've brought it to their council to reinstate the ability to use cell phones. That narrowly failed to be passed, so they still have a ban. But one of the interesting reasons why that was brought forth was tourism. And like Santa Fe, we have a, we, tourism is extremely important to our community. We've had issues in the past where tourists seem to get possibly picked on a little bit more than, than the local residents. And what was happening in Santa Fe is the, the citizens of Santa Fe are starting to comply heavily with it, with this. They know it's illegal to use cell phones. So the only people who are largely using cell phones in Santa Fe are the tourists. And they're being, so, so when Santa Fe comes up with stats that they are issuing in the neighborhood of 100 citations a month, the bulk of that is tourists. And that kind of concerns me as, you know, I'm a big fan of the tourists in town, I think they create a tremendous benefit to, to the local economy. Doesn't mean that we can't get around, if we, if we use, if we educate our tourists enough through signage and such like that, we can also mitigate that, so that's, that doesn't kill this, this ordinance in my mind. I still think I could support it if we work around that fact, but that is, that is a huge concern on, on my part. One of the, one of the other issues I have found that's been concerning in some of the research I've had is, there, there doesn't seem to be any strong evidence that using the phone, that using the phone is any different than, than talking to a passenger. I know we had some comments here earlier that it, that they feel it is, but the data that I'm seeing reported on does not appear to be supporting that as much as I've heard verbalized. Now, when I see some of the reports saying that the use of phones is a big distraction, I have found that most documents seem to gravitate more towards the texting. And as such, I, I feel strongly about that, I would love to see texting banned, you know, for starters, on a, on a personal emotional level. Within the last year, my wooden fence was driven, driven into by a lady texting. I'm wondering if, as her vehicle was kind of stuck there and couldn't be moved, if she was trying to text 911 or something, but, but on another, in any case, you know, I do feel strongly about texting, and I, I could definitely support without, without much reservation a ban on texting, but I'm still a little skeptical on all use of phones. One of the, the personal observations I've been trying to do over this last 30 days is also watch my own behavior and modify it, because I'm one of that one-third of drivers who have used cell phones in the past, and, and I've been trying to make a conscious effort not to do so. In the last 30 days, I think, based on who was calling, I answered about three calls, and tried to make an effort to pull over and respond to those. But I found, I, you know, I didn't, I don't need to use the cellphone in the vehicle, so I'm not personally opposed to a ban, but I could see where others might be. I was also trying to be aware of, had, did the reduction in my cellphone use, did it help with my driving? Possibly, possibly not. I did notice that there's still times of absent mindedness or other things that led to some points in my driving that I thought, you know, I, I could have easily been stopped right there. For example, I think more distracting to me personally is when I'm trying to apply some discipline to my kids in the backseat, and in many cases, and that happens far too frequently, and, and, but hopefully, we don't ban the ability to take our kids in our backseats That's a big question. Luckily, we do have a busing system, I could probably use that. I, I'm on the fence, I think I could support this, I definitely feel I could support a ban on texting. I would like to be motivated a little bit further on the phones, if that's going to be the case. But I'm definitely on the fence, and would like to hear some other comments or some comments from the public to help motivate my vote one way or another.
Just so you're aware, and to make sure the meeting is clean, is, we're discussing an amendment to the NOI. This is not, we're not discussing or going to vote on the NOI at this point, we're just discussing the amendment. And the amendment basically leaves, all of the intent of the NOI is the same, and it cleans up the language and makes it a little more specific. So that's, let's, let's make sure we're, we're discussing the amendment at this point. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. I'm going to get there, I'm going to go to the public after we, we deal with this amendment, and before we vote on the entire NOI. So.
Mr. Mayor, just as a quick question. If we amend the NOI, that doesn't make it that we have to have that amended NOI go for 30 more days?
The only reason that we would have to renotice the NOI is if we made a significant change that changed the, the original intent. Correct, Mr. Scavran?
Yes.
Thank you.
Even more so, if you were voting on the ordinance, and the ordinance had a variance from the NOI, what you're doing now is, the NOI is much less of the standard, you can, you've introduced to the public what the subject of discussion was going to be, now you're tidying up the NOI. It becomes more important, when you're voting on the ordinance, that the ordinance itself be consistent with the NOI. So what you're doing now, by doing the amendment to the NOI, then you might even vote on the NOI as amended. At that point, it opens the venue for discussion, and at the, when you decide to vote, if it does pass, and then you discuss it, bring it back to vote on it as an ordinance, it must be consistent with the NOI as passed tonight.
This is, this is the final reading. We are voting on an ordinance tonight.
Hey, I was absent for the last meeting, so I wasn't aware that that had already been brought in. So the, it'd be better than to amend, amending, amending the NOI to conform to a new ordinance.
I believe essentially that's what his motion was, was to make an amendment to the ordinance 1207 that is before us tonight for final reading.
Right.
Correct?
If that was the intent, that is correct.
The, I mean, it's been no secret in the community on, on my opposition to the, the talking part of, of this NOI, this ordinance. So with that, and without any changes to the intent, there's been a motion to amend, can I see your motion? can I see your motion? There was a motion to amend and a second, and there's no further discussion that, under the, now therefore, number six is, shall re-drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing, talking, or entering data into a handheld cellular, cellular device or radio telephone or reading data therefrom while the vehicle is in motion upon a street or roadway within the town. Calling 911 while driving in order to request roadside assistance or to report an emergency or crime being committed shall be exempt from this regulation. Use of hands-free communication devices whose operation does not require manual dialing nor manual data input while driving shall also be exempt. All those in favor of the proposed language signify by saying aye.
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 There's...
Aye.
Take your head.
There's four ayes. Any opposed? Motion carries and the ordinance is amended. Now, we're back to the ordinance with the new language and I'm going to open it to the audience for public comment on the ordinance. Please come to the podium.
I very strongly support the amendment to this particular ordinance 1207. We have had some experience in the state already with regard to, to this issue. And we have seen, for example, that some of the larger cities in the state such as Santa Fe, Las Cruces, and others have decided that they would take the step for more safety and security for their citizens to put such an ordinance in place. And I am very hopeful that you will have the political strength and the courage to add our good city to that listing who have decided that they would do this. There's a lot of information out there, a lot of it is conflicting. I realize that as well as, as all of you do and much of the public. We've been hearing about it, reading about it, et cetera. And I don't know whether it's one-third or one-quarter of the public that are actually engaged, but if you don't mind, I, I want you to know that as I drive around the streets in Silver City, it seems very likely to me that something like one out of ten of the members of the community at this point or another are on that telephone. I recall that not long ago, and, and I'm trying to remember whether it was a county commission meeting or one of our meetings here for the city, that I was just making a turn to come in to a meeting that was to take place in ten minutes and, and I was taking it easy, but a person driving a pickup right in front of me almost caused me to hit them because they were distracted with a telephone. So this is a very extremely important issue and it is a deadly issue for real human beings in our city who are coming and going and having to be very careful with those who continue to engage in this activity. Now, these other cities I've mentioned, and there are several, and others are considering it in the same manner we are carefully, have had considerable experience and yes, it's this way and that way, but by and large, by and large, the, the idea is that they are going to make an effort and experiment at the very least to see if they can cut back on those who are being killed and maimed in our state and, and our county and our city as we speak. And so I want to use the strongest terms that, that I can use in order to convince you that, please don't be thinking, not any one of you, please, about being politically safe or something like that when we are discussing something so deadly serious as the safety and security. And, and this is in fact a matter of safety, security, and well-being of our citizens. I'm asking that you remain supportive, as I believe most of you are, and get this passed this evening so that we can go forward to covering this issue for everyone in our city. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Kendra.
Hello, I'm Kendra Milligan, and tonight I'm with the Grant County DWI Planning Council. I'm here representing them. Today, we voted to support the ordinance 1207 as part of the efforts to promote traffic safety in our community. Though it sparked heated debate at our council meeting and no doubt in the community as well, we urge you to reach outside your technological comfort zone and think about the community's safety and public health. And please pass and support this ordinance. I would like to remind the community that at one time we were told that people could hold their liquor while they drove and we were told by car manufacturers that they could not afford to put seat belts for the safety of drivers in the cars. The National Safety Council has found that one in four traffic accidents in 2009 were caused by cellphone use. And I would like to say that why wait for what's right? This council, this council, our town council should do what's right for our public safety. It takes time to change and I know technology is new and as a community, we've grown quickly to embrace using cell phones and texting while driving, but we have to remember that at one time we also embraced drinking while driving. Thank you.
Thanks. Peter?
Governor, Mr. Mayor, council, this is an issue that I feel very strongly about because I was involved in an accident involving a cellphone. It was on College Street and there was a family with small children walking through a crosswalk and I stopped so that they could walk through that crosswalk and I could see an oncoming car coming towards them and I could see that the driver was on the cellphone and I could see that the driver was not looking at the street and I could see the children walking and the car coming and it was one of those slow motion kind of things. And what happened is the car drove right through the sidewalk. The first child, who was about two years old, walked into the side of the car, spun around about five times and was knocked unconscious. And it was the scariest thing I've ever seen. A microsecond and that car would have run down the child and crushed her. In this instance, the, I did have a cellphone, I did call 911, the fire department responded, the child recovered, she was fine. But a microsecond and that child would have been dead and it was because that person was on a cellphone and momentarily distracted. It was a serious experience, I've never used a cellphone while I'm driving again. I really encourage you to support a limitation on, on using cell phones in the car. And as far as the concern about tourists, perhaps the police department could issue warnings to people about the cellphone use as opposed to citations immediately, but it really is a deadly issue.
Mayor, council, and staff, I'm Sissy McAndrew, I'm here tonight as a citizen. And I was at the meeting last month when this was brought up and I was thrilled to hear we were moving in that direction. I personally am involved in real estate and I have been guilty of using my phone more than I know I should have. I also know how good my behavior is when I'm in those other communities where it is illegal to use it. I don't even think about answering it, I just turn it off and I leave it at the side of my, you know, in my passenger seat or somewhere else. It doesn't even cross my mind and I know I've got much better focus on what I'm doing. I also know how often in a day I sit and basically cuss because somebody is missing a light or not, not moving forward in a, a regular movement of traffic because they're on a cellphone. And I also very much support the amendment because I believe that our officers have the equipment to operate hands-free and I think sometimes perhaps when they are sitting in their vehicle, they're making personal calls, so I'm glad to see that the amendment is, is taking care of that where there will not be an exemption for government and law enforcement. I highly support this. I also believe, as Peter mentioned, that we can find some signage. I think the visitor's center and the general public can help to communicate to people that we have moved forward as a community and that we did not allow cellphone use. And I encourage you to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Joe?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, I'm here on behalf of myself and speaking as a parent of a young person who just received their provisional driver's license. I was glad to hear that she would be banned from texting and, and using her cellphone while she was learning, but I don't understand any reason at all to train somebody in the way they should go and then say, eh, it's okay now. So I, I agree with the amendment, I agree with the ordinance. I think that it's, it's a technological advantage that we tend to take advantage of in our personal lives and we get taught up in needing to be heard and to be seen and that takes our focus off of our driving rather than being a part of the communal atmosphere of following the rules and regulations on the road. And if you need to talk, talk with the folks that are with you in the car rather than those someplace else. I, I support the amendment and ordinance.
Thank you. Any other comments? Kendra?
Mayor, city council, I support the amendment as stated. I want to remind some information and, and address some of the, the concerns. First and foremost, we can always post signs at the entrance to this city to indicate that a cellphone use is enforced. That would probably put out the advertisement, we can put it on our website, we can put it on the, any website that advertises Silver City. The issue is, is that, and I'm gonna throw some more stats at you. In 2008, the cause of accident, and it's always been the worst cause for Silver City, the causation factor for accidents has been driver inattention. Whatever the activity is, it is our number one causation factor. In 2008, we had ninety-three accidents associated with them. 2009, it went up to one hundred and twelve. In 2010, it went up to a hundred and twenty-four. We have an issue with driver inattention in this town, whatever the cause is. If we can proactively, and I said it before, if we can proactively attack one portion of that and knock down those accidents, then we are creating a more safer environment for our public and those who visit here. If you want to go to the next step and, and discuss the National Safety Council, again, there's so much information out there on, on distracted driving, which most of the information that I obtained also associates with, with the, can you hear me, Mayor? Okay. Associated with the use of cell phones. I mean, it's, it's a big distraction. We have so many different companies, even the CDC has chimed in on this because of the number of injuries and I have the documentation that I can provide. It, it is an epidemic, it is a serious issue and it's only gonna get worse until other states, jurisdictions, et cetera, decide to address this issue. New Mexico, as stated, is one of eleven states without some type of ban. It's coming, it will come in one form or another. I want to address a couple of the, the comments it made comparing us to Las Cruces and Albuquerque. We're not that big. We have a population of ten thousand plus, we also have probably a service population of fifteen thousand to seventeen thousand. We're not that big. Our enforcement will be more effective in our town because of our population and we have a traffic unit that will target those periodically. Our patrol unit, division does direct patrol, that's our primary in, in answering calls for service, but we have a traffic unit. Our main goal, and, and I've said this year after year, is the reduction of traffic pressures in, in this town. We haven't been real successful. As a matter of fact, I think last year we had a one percent increase if I remember correctly. Again, we have a driver inattention issue that, that is our most predominant causation factor which we need to address. I'll give some additional, this is distracted driving faction. CTIA, which is the Wireless Association, also put forth information on this, reports that there is more than two-hundred-and-seventy million of cellphone subscribers. This is up dramatically from a hundred million subscribers in 2000 and estimated a hundred and ten billion text messages were sent monthly in 2008. The information is a little bit dated. Nationwide Insurance Public Opinion Poll showed eighty-one percent of the public admitted talking on the cellphone or driving. The National Highway Traffic Safety Association estimates that twelve percent of the drivers at any point during the day are talking on a cellphone and driving. The issue becomes when you're driving a motor vehicle and you're distracted by something, there's always different levels of distraction. As Ms. Porter stated earlier, you have a distraction of using a cellphone comparable to a point oh eight intoxication. All the studies that I've gone through have indicated the same thing. There's research out there on both for and against banning cell phones, for and against using texting, and it's almost a hundred percent banning texting. There, there's no doubt about that. Again, there, there's different information bouncing back and forth on the use of the cellphone. But I want, I want to remind the council, when you're on the cellphone, you lose thirty-seven percent of your cognitive ability... of your cognitive ability to perceive, et cetera. You're going to end up now reacting slower in any given circumstance. Your perception of danger is going to be slower. You're talking on the phone, and you lose 37% of your cognitive ability to think, react, et cetera, and a kid runs out in front of you. What's going to happen? You're going to react slower. You're probably going to hit that child. The normal human reaction time to any perceived danger is approximately 7.5, 0.75 seconds. And then you have to react to that. So you're building time. And that's the premise behind the use of the cellphone or any distraction, is you're building a time for reaction. You're going to react a lot slower. Strange thing, when I was doing the research on this, if you, if you take a look at it, a person at a .08 drug intoxication will react faster than somebody with a cellphone. And there's research for it. They will react, but they will also react harder. They will brake harder than any given distraction or danger. Drivers who use cellphones are four times more likely to be involved in a crash. Two different studies found this same conclusion. A 1997 New England Journal, how many years back was that when we started using cellphones? New England Journal of Medicine examination of hospital records in 2005, Insurance Institute of the Highway, for Highway Safety studied crashed itself on records. No difference exists in cognitive distraction, the mental process of knowing, which includes awareness, judgment, and perception between handheld and hands-free devices. In other words, it's the same. According to simulator studies conducted by the University of Utah. So again, there's research out there. And just to reiterate, the use of a cellphone here and the use of a hands-free device, there's no difference. So that may be something that the city council may want to take into consideration as well. One recent simulator study compared drivers using cellphones and drivers impaired by alcohol. Cellphone users had slower reaction times than drivers with .08 but alcohol concentration, slower reaction to vehicles braking in front of them. The issue becomes, and I want to, I want to cover this. Take a look at our streets. Take a look at the traffic that we have on our streets. We have a large amount of traffic during specific periods of time. What is the following distance of those vehicles that are following you and your family? To increase reaction time, we have to increase distance from that vehicle in front of you. If you're on the cellphone and you're talking or texting, obviously, you're not going to react in time to avoid colliding with that vehicle in front of you. A lot of our accidents, which are driver inattention, are related to collisions. Many businesses and organizations understand the risk and are already taking action. Among the NSC members who responded to the 2009 survey, 58%, 1,163 out of 2,004 respondents said their organization had a cellphone policy of some kind. Of those, 99% said the policy did not affect productivity, and 20% saw a decrease of unemployment, crash rates, and property damage. And I could go through this entire stack of paperwork. I agree. I think I've beat it to death and provided enough information. I'm in support of, as amended, an ordinance.
Comments? Questions? Counselor Bedison?
I just wanted to say, Counselor Maronis had brought up earlier a few things, and Chief Ue brought up some things that I had mentioned a month ago about the fact that, my understanding is that talking on a cellphone, whether it's hands-free or up to your ear, is just, has the same ability to decrease your cognitive capabilities. So in looking at this, I mean, I understand its importance, and I understand what we're trying to get at, but there's so much conflicting information out there. There's data that's behind the curve. There's things like when 81% of people are talking about being on the cellphone, I would say that in my car, I am on the cellphone, but I'm not holding it to my ear because I am on a hands-free device, which I have decided that it is just as distracting and do not use it, you know, with any regularity at all anymore because I've made that decision. I guess what I'm getting at is that I, I'm not sure, do I, this, I'm really getting, I'm really confused. I know that the number of phone calls and emails I received, there's a flat-out request in terms of this ordinance that they want a ban on texting. When they think of a ban on cellphones, their first thing is a ban on texting. Because of that, looking down, seeing people looking down and going like this, or holding it up on the steering wheel, texting as they drive, that's an issue. That's something that they can see. So that's something that is really available. If we talk about the fact that impairment occurs at the same level, whether you're holding a phone to your ear or you're doing it through a hands-free communication device, but we have now, in this current iteration of this, permit the use of hands-free communication devices, we haven't solved the problem. And how are you going to enforce people not using cellphones in any way, shape, or form, including hands-free devices? Because you would know whether I was singing to the radio or talking into my hands-free Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, I'm not, but, but this is what I'm saying, is if, if we're going to ban it, ban it all the way. But I don't know how you enforce that. No, I don't know how you enforce that. I don't know how you can come up to my vehicle and know that I was on my cellphone if you stop me when it's a hands-free device.
Lady Muth.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt. You're right. It would be very tough to enforce that portion, but if you're holding it here, now you have an issue. And that's something that visibly we can see and we can enforce. I, in my vehicle, I have a Bluetooth built in, and it's all set up that once I enter my vehicle, it just automatically connects up, and I just have to hit a button to answer. I can talk, but the issue is the level of distraction given. I can talk, and I can look around. The issue with having a phone to your head, and yes, you're right, talking and having an intense conversation is a different level of distraction. Talking and being able to have my head on a swivel and look around and see is less of a distraction, but still a distraction. I agree. We can see them doing this, hopefully, unless they have it down here, which we won't be able to see. We can see them doing this. We can see them having up, looking at it, and that's what we want to enforce, is that distraction. We're not going to be able to enforce the Bluetooth because we don't know what they're, what they're really doing. We don't have the elements of the crime to stop them at that point. But if we see them on the phone or texting, that's the elements of the crime that we can't enforce, or ordinance, or traffic violation.
I understand that. And Chief, what may be the conundrum my facing is that you have just stated, and read all statistics that said that use of a cellphone, whether in your hand or hands-free, has the same degree of reduction of cognitive ability to perceive. There's no distinction between that. That's what I found in my research, and that's apparently some of the research that Counselor Maronis has also indicated. That's, that's what I find to be the failing here, is that, I understand what you've just explained to me. I understand how we can enforce that, but if the same level of the cognitive ability to perceive is caused by whether I'm holding it to my ear or speaking through a hands-free device, we haven't solved the problem in that respect. But I think in terms of talking on the cellphone, and I can just tell a quick story. When I was in California with my mother, I refused to let her use that Bluetooth, and she couldn't drive the car because she almost ran us off the road. She's going on 80. She'll get mad if she ever hears this, but I'm just saying, I just said, why does an 80-year-old, almost 80-year-old, have to have that in her vehicle? What if your kids call them? I said, no, it's not that important. So there has to be that decision as well. It's just like the decision to put the seatbelt on. Yes, we do enforce that, but we can't, you know, and I understand what we're saying, but I fully support a ban on texting, and I completely do. I think that there's room to work with the rest of it right now. I mean, I'm just so uncomfortable with certain things. I'm so uncomfortable with how do we deal with something like what's in all vehicles today, the new vehicles, which is hands-free, when I know that it's just as impairing to someone. I mean, I myself have experienced it and decided I'm not using it. My brothers made the same choice, even though it's okay to do that in Los Angeles. So is my sister. It is not, they have decided that it's not okay to do that. So there are choices that have to be made, and I think that people do come down to make those choices. And I think that that comes down to education, which currently, the education has been really hit really hard, and significantly during the Olympics coverage, because of all the kids that were watching, was texting and driving. And I think that we can do a lot to do that, and I understand, I mean, I do, I'm really pretty emotional about this, but right now, I just think that there's a number of other things that we can't control that are part of the problem, and I don't know how we get to it, and we're only going to be doing a fraction of it. And, and, you know, talking to somebody in the, I can tell you, talking to somebody in a car can be just as distracting. Having experienced that recently, where somebody apparently decided that going five miles an hour or having an argument with the person in the front seat was more important to them than driving the vehicle. It wasn't on the cellphone. They were fighting in the front seat. So, I don't know. I'm just saying, it's a, I'm at the point where I'll support a ban on texting, but I, I think there's some other things that I'd like to, I really feel like we need some more clarification on.
Chief?
I disagree, and I will explain why. We try to enforce what we can catch. We're not going to catch that one point, but you still have the issue with these individuals driving at a comparable .08 intoxication when they're on the phone. We're going to see that. We can enforce that. Yet if it's a total ban, it really doesn't matter because we're not going to see the other portion. If you allow the Bluetooth, at least we're cutting down on a portion of them. So in effect, what we're doing is we're trying to create a public safety through non-use of a cellphone. If they use a Bluetooth, we're not going to see it anyway, most of the time. But we still want to impact those issues that we can impact to cut down and create a air of safety for the public and those who visit here.
Mayor, make a motion that we take a break.
Is there a second?
A second's a motion!
There's a motion and a second for recess. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for recess. We'll call this meeting back to order. I always save my comments for the last, and this is an interesting situation, and being as there's so much conflicting data, there's also the issue of, we set the standard in the community for a level of behavior and consideration of others in some of the laws that we do. We also have issues that we're preempted by the state, and we're not allowed to act because the justifiable ones are, basically deal with inter-district, inter-county, interstate issues. As Counselor Maronis pointed out, this may be one of them that we could be preempted on if the state so chose. They have not. The Highway Loss Data Institute, which looks at insurance, found that the cellphone bans don't reduce accidents. And in light of that, the Department of Transportation at the federal level asked that no more bans go put in, be put in place, but the ones that were in place not be rescinded while further research is done. So somebody wants to make a career out of this. The NTSB recommends a full ban on use of cellphones while driving, while acknowledging that the ban does not solve the problem. And it must be accompanied by a public education component for it to be effective, which becomes very, very difficult when you're trying to do a public education for people that don't live here, may never have been here before. The Governor's Highway Safety Association found that there was no reduce in crashes there, which also goes to some of the other discussion on the use of a hands-free device. The handheld cellphones are being reduced in many districts while people are developing a sense of security, which is encouraged by the law on requiring them, if they're going to talk on the phone, to use a hands-free device, when in fact, it does not create an increase in, in safety of those around you or yourself. There's just, there's many, many studies. One of those issues that we could, we could bounce statistics back and forth for days. There's, looking at, we've heard numbers of 1 in 10 people around Silver City are on the phone. Our crash volume doesn't support that that would be a leading cause of accidents. The warnings, if the police were to issue warnings, does not prevent accidents, as was proposed when this ordinance was first introduced as an NOI, that having this would be, would allow a prevention mechanism. be, would allow a prevention mechanism that the current careless driving, having a distracted driving component to it. So it's quite interesting and I think it puts the law enforcement, it puts the judicial system into an interesting situation. There was, it was just stated that person using the cellphone is, their driving capacity is worse than somebody with a 0.08 blood alcohol level. Well, to me, that would indicate they could be pulled over for careless driving as a distracted I think we have a significant problem with driving in this town, hence the thousands of citations that are issued by our law enforcement. It's almost hard to find somebody coming to a complete stop. I've got a guy in my neighborhood that I don't think has ever stopped at the stop sign by my house. There's so many reasons. There's people that are racing up to intersections. There's people that are flying by me and then I'm sitting next to them at stop signs. They're changing lanes right at the intersection on the solid line. There are just any number of reasons that people are crashing in this town. When we attack an issue such as been proposed here, it's important on one side to have objective data and another to have subjective data. We all remember a few years back when meth started popping up again and our congressman and everybody showing up doing meth town halls and I'm looking at the data coming out of Yucca Lodge that showing cocaine was a much worse problem than meth in our treatment facilities. It was very easy to jump on the bandwagon of a buzzword, a buzz topic, and act like we're doing something. The only thing that can possibly be done that would potentially reduce the accidents is a complete ban on cellphone use of any type, any kind, while operating a motor vehicle. And anything short of that, the data's not showing that it's going to have an effect. So we get to the discussion of, well, let's do something. Let's set a standard. Let's try it for a year. Let's try it for six months, see if it has effect. I can go with that. What is it? What level do we want to run a test? Do we need to run tests that have already been done in other jurisdictions? You look at the duties of the council is to protect the life, safety and health of the citizens of Silver City. Anything that we pass should accomplish that. And that's one of the reasons that we read a mission statement at the very beginning is to set the standards for what we do. So that's my comments. I still am not in support of a complete ban on talking while driving. I would absolutely support starting with texting and driving and seeing if there's an effect. Any other discussion? Counselor Bedison.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to amend ordinance number 1207, number six, to the following. Drive a motor vehicle or bicycle while dialing or entering data into a handheld cellular device or radio telephone or reading data therefrom while the vehicle is in motion upon a town, street or roadway. Calling 911 while driving in order to request roadside assistance to report an emergency or crime being committed shall be exempt from this regulation. Use of a hands-free communication device whose operation does not require manual dialing nor manual data input shall also be exempt. Did I correct? So I see on this. And that's, we want to drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle to be the first part of that.
Make your motion.
I'd like to change that first part to read. Drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle. Is it or bicycle? Because I can't. Yes. Okay. Vehicle, period.
We're dealing with the amended NOI. So are you saying that, so Bedison is suggesting that change now is dealing with the amended NOI.
Correct. Yeah, and that's what I meant to say. My apologies, the amended NOI.
You began reading from the NOI rather than the amended.
No, I, no.
We're good.
We're good.
She's reading exactly what her motion should be, not, not the old or the amended.
Okay. Would you repeat it? Yes.
The, the motion is to drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing or entering data into a handheld cellular device or radio telephone or reading data therefrom while the vehicle is in motion upon a town, street or roadway, calling 911 while driving in order to request roadside assistance to report an emergency or crime being committed shall be exempt from this regulation. Use of a hands-free communication device whose operation does not require manual dialing nor manual data shall also be exempt.
Mr. Mayor.
We can delete that last.
I do have to make one other adjustment. It should say, let me read that for some time. There's one, I'm sorry, trying to make sure this reads correctly, with some other changes that remain early.
We'll get to a couple.
Let me read it one more time as soon as I make this. Okay. Let me read it one more time. The motion is as follows. Drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing or entering data into a handheld cellular device or radio telephone or reading data therefrom while the vehicle is in motion upon a street or roadway within the town, calling 911 while driving in order to request roadside assistance to report an emergency or crime being committed shall be exempt from this regulation. Use of a hands-free communication device whose operation does not require manual dialing nor manual data input shall also be exempt, if I've got that correct.
Talking is removed from the front.
Dialing is removed from the front, not talking.
So is talking.
So is talking. That's true, okay. For the 17th time, I will read this one more time.
I can't read mine anymore.
Yeah, don't worry. You're right. You're correct. The mayor's correct on something he just reminded me of. My amended motion to the amended NOI is as follows. My motion to the amended, and I'm sorry, I keep changing this to make sure I've done this right. Drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing or entering data into a handheld cellular device or radio telephone or reading data therefrom while the vehicle is in motion upon a street or roadway within the town, period. Calling 911 while driving in order to request roadside assistance is to report an emergency or crime being committed shall be exempt from this regulation, period. Correct? Because there is no ability to speak because there's been no dialing, if I, if I understand the motion correctly.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. To amend the amended NOI 1207, to read, drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing or entering data into a handheld cellular device or radio telephone or reading data therefrom while the vehicle's in motion upon a town, street or roadway.
Mr. Mayor.
Within the town, calling 911 while driving in order to request roadside assistance to report an emergency or crime being committed shall be exempt from this regulation. There's motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Council Moronis.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple points. One of the first things I said is, you know, I'd definitely be in favor of a texting issue which this meets. I also mentioned I was on the fence on any further bans, which, you know, there has been some, some very good discussion that was very compelling on that side. I was very pleased to see that a couple individuals in the tourism-related industry is in favor of a ban that's appreciated and very important as I make my decisions. I also believe that any type of improvement by percentage is better than no movement at all. I think there's probably many people who would like to even push that further. This is also by percentage an improvement over what we have, which is nothing. So I, we do meet that and that is a very important element here. I appreciate the fact that the size of the town does allow for better enforcement. I truly believe that the chief is, is correct, that we probably have a slightly easier time of enforcing any type of ban where there's just texting or had we chosen, or if we even choose to amend even further, more action. I think the, our police department has the ability to, to probably enforce potentially better than the larger towns that have done similar action. I would like to ask some questions. I don't know if the police chief is the best person to answer or even any of ours. I also just like to hear just some affirmation that this or even a future, even if we amend this even further, do we believe that this will prevent accidents? I think that is a, that is a question that hasn't been answered. Will this, basically, would texting alone, you think, be enforceable, prevent accidents? Or do we absolutely need to go further?
I'll answer it this way. With just a texting, it's not going to be as effective in reducing accidents. Texting, the act of texting, they can do it down here or below the window sill where we can't see. Optimally, if we want to do an operation to impact texting, we're going to be standing on a corner and watching. So my opinion is that enforcing texting, yes, it's a good start. Have no problem. Banning the total use of cellphones is going to have more of an impact on crashes than just doing texting.
Some of the input that was forwarded that I believe probably to all of us, but I do know I was forwarded some information, questioning whether there are other laws that can accomplish the same thing. What I don't understand is, I believe there's other laws, you know, that are related to distractions, careless driving. Are those laws that are really only after-the-fact type laws or are they laws that could be applied while driving before an accident, calling this a distraction, if it's noticeably a distraction, somebody swerving with a phone, even if it isn't banned, if somebody's just swerving and they're on the phone, can they be cited for being distracted or careless driving, reckless driving?
Yes. If I'm traveling down the roadway and I'm talking on the phone and I maintain my lane, I stop at all the traffic lights, et cetera, then I can't cite you for careless. If you weave across, fell to stop at, or any other violation because you're on the phone, then I can cite you for careless or whatever. One of the, one of the comments was made, which we see on occasion, is a person stopped at a traffic light and texting but doesn't notice a green light. That's a specific violation of stop, standing in parking in prohibited areas. So there's an action for that as well. Most of the time when we do a careless driving, it's after some type of action occurs and most associated with a crash. So again, if you're weaving, I can cite you for one of two things. I can cite you for failure to maintain a lane or I can cite you for careless. Most appropriately in court, the court wants us to cite what pertains to them. So getting back to the cellphone issue, careless driving is not, it's a catch-all. It really is. Under prohibited activities while operating a motor vehicle, there's specific items in there such as can't have anybody riding on your lap while operating a motor vehicle, can't have a dog on your lap while operating a motor vehicle. You're not supposed to operate any that creates a distraction or honk your horn. That's part of that ordinance as well. When we get to court and have to deal with a cellphone issue, generally it's after the fact on a crash. When we get to court on a proactive issue, the element of distraction, prohibited activities while operating a motor vehicle, is that act of using that phone. And again, that's what we are trying to accomplish as a proactive measure. Even a careless driving, it creates a, they could be doing anything and weave into another lane and be cited for either a specific violation or careless driving. The issue is, is driving down the roadway, one more comment, the issue is me driving down that roadway with this stuck to my head and my peripheral view is gone. I don't see that child coming out. I don't see that danger over here if I have that cellphone up or if I'm texting. And that's what we're trying to prevent is those type of accidents.
I just would say that the amendment that I just proposed, that was seconded, that it is dialing, so they're punching in a phone number, that's same as entering in data. Entering or reading data that can be texting, reading an email, replying to an email, replying to a text, surfing the web, all things that people like to do when they're driving. So, you know, the act of dialing in and of itself is, is part of that. So that's capturing at least the beginning of that. And I'd like to, I guess when I, I mean, the same argument I'm going to say can be used for whether it's, you know, the previously one, the previous amendment or the one that I've just proposed. I think that we have to remember that our ordinances are not static, that if we feel that in a year that there hasn't been any significant change, that the chief that in a year that there hasn't been any significant change, that the chief can bring back to us, that shows that, is this working? How has it, do we see our crash statistics starting to go down? Do we see any sort of movement on this? Is it because of that? Is it because of other types of enforcement that they're doing? I mean, any number of measures that could be done. I mean, I think what I'm saying is, this can be adjusted. It can go further, or either way. I just, I feel that this is the beginning of it, and it's getting at the crux of much of the, at least what people have, relate to me, they see as the problem, in terms of the entering of any form or reading of data. Because while they can do it down here, their eyes are still focused down, and hopefully if an officer sees that their eyes are down, and they're not going anywhere, that, you know, with the other options that are available to them for stopping someone, or pulling them over, issuing citations for not, you know, sitting at a green light for quite a while, that those options will be available to our officers who really do diligence on what they do on a daily basis.
Mr. S. Cameron.
To Counsel Bedestin's amendment. Now, I don't have a car that has hands-free device built into it, so I'm going to make an assumption that a text message could come across on that screen, or that you can dial off of that screen within the car. My concern is, is that it's, and I don't know this technology, so I'm just asking. You say, "Drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing, entering data into a handheld cellular device." What if you were dialing or entering data onto a hands-free device, like a touchscreen? So that if there was an ability to do a touchscreen on the hands-free device, wouldn't it be better then, in the amendment, "Drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing, entering data into," and get rid of the handheld words, and just say, "into a cellular device or radio telephone"? If that technology exists where it becomes touchscreen, then you got even a worse problem, because now you're moving forward, dialing a number in on a touchscreen, like you can do with an iPad.
Currently, I don't think they're going to go in that direction, simply because there's safety measures, I mean, specifically states when I enter into my vehicle, that you understand that you cannot yet be fully, full-on stopped, if you're going to use anything on it. Just, let me finish, to the screen. Whether it's putting stuff into the GPS system, or anything else. I mean, I literally have to be pulled off the side of the road to put that much information, and it's all voice-controlled, and there's a lot of voice control that I can't do in my vehicle. There's more voice control. There is the option for a passenger only to hit a button to call, so I can say, dial so-and-so, voice control. They can hit the green button on their side to dial it, but they cannot bring up my address book or anything, because that's the safety measure. They don't want anybody to be driving and be able to add, to access their address book, or anything like that. I mean, I can't even do that with my music.
I'm just throwing out the possibility of there being touchscreen technology, or plugging in an iPad into a car, and being able to accomplish that. Doesn't hurt the intent of your ordinance, it's just, I'm wondering whether it should just say cellular device, rather than handheld device.
Thank you. Counsel Morris.
I just wanted to comment, very similar to the final comment, is, I don't see that extra words undermining the intent of the amendment, so I would, if Counsel Bedestin is willing to use that language, I'd be willing to accept that amendment as well.
I think it's fine. I'm concerned if we just say cellular device, that doesn't cover an iPad, though. That's not a cellular device. Yeah.
Is that a part of the amendment?
Yes, it is. Yes, I accept it. I was just concerned that the cellular device doesn't include the iPad option that was brought up.
That?
That is a different thing.
That can take us into a whole other realm of issues, of other distractions that we're not even talking about tonight. The GPS that's on my dash, I can enter in a new street address, I can find a hotel when I'm out of town, while I'm driving down the road, entering data. If we want to go there, we can do that on a separate ordinance. This one, let's stick to cellular device, radio telephone. Chief.
Again, one last comment. I want to reiterate that this is an observation-driven violation. You need to be able to see it. Again, if you just ban texting, most texting happened below our observation level.
Thank you.
The only other concern that I had was, I believe pound 611 is, would report a DWI or something to our local police. If someone were to dial, I think it's pound 611, to report a DWI, does that work in Silver City?
I think that goes to the state.
But it does go to the state, which would relay it back to our dispatch, to our officer. So...
I'd like to put that in my motion, Mayor. Pound 611, if Counsel Rose will accept that change.
Okay. Thank you. The Counsel Bedestin amended to add, calling 911, or pound 611. And Counsel Morris made the second, and agrees to the amendment. So, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to amend the amended NOI 1207, to have 12-6-12.86 read, "Drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing or entering data into a cellular device or radio telephone, or reading data from therefrom, while the vehicle is in motion upon a street or roadway within the town. Calling 911 or pound 611 while driving in order to request roadside assistance to report an emergency or crime being committed shall be exempt from the regulation." There's a motion, a second, no further discussion. All those in favor of this amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one. Now, we have an amended NOI 1207. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? Is there a motion? Yes, and it's a, if you cared to make a motion, it would be a motion to approve ordinance 1207, twice amended, to read that language.
I move to approve ordinance number 1207, twice amended, to read per number six. Drive a motorized or manually powered vehicle while dialing or entering data into a cellular device or radio telephone, or reading data from therefrom, while the vehicle is in motion upon a street or roadway within the town. Calling 911 or pound 611 while driving in order to request roadside assistance to report an emergency or crime being committed shall be exempt from the ordinance, from the regulation.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1207, as twice amended. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just a basic comment I made. I think this is a good start. I think we hopefully can get some information in relatively short order, if this passes, that is. And if we do need to move further and ban more items at a future time, I think we'll have some better information with time.
Any other discussion? There's a motion, a second, to approve ordinance number 1207, as twice amended. No further discussion. Roll call, please.
Counsel Bedestin. Aye. Counsel Moore. Aye.
No. No.
Counsel Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Counsel Ray, even though you voted no, it's your first ordinance.
I enjoyed that debate. I really did. It was really interesting. But I had to listen to what some of the people wanted, and listen to the chief talk also, and to part of the audience, but unfortunately, this didn't pass. But it's okay, though. Thank you anyway.
Half of it passed. The next item on the agenda, the back rows are going to be happy, is approval/disapproval of special dispenser permit application for a concert event sponsored by Q's Southern Bistro on Pope Street on September 1st, 2012, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. License holder, Yesterday's Enterprises Incorporated, owner Lillian and Mark Grady, 2800 Pinos Altos Road, Silver City, New Mexico. You have the floor.
All right. Well, I guess you kind of described what we're trying to put together on the Labor Day weekend for September 1st. It's in conjunction with, it's called a guardian run, which is basically, all of the people that service us and protect us on a daily basis, we're getting together with all the chef's department, police department, fire department, and putting together a benefit bike run, where the proceeds go towards scholarship funds for certain people within those departments. Also, we are trying to put together a, basically, a street festival concert that would allow us to have something for everyone that is participating in this event. And with that, we're asking Yesterday's Enterprises to pull a picnic license, which we'll be cosponsoring with, as well as other sponsors within the community that are getting involved with this event. But we can't do any of this without your, your honest permission.
So, because I'm not real sure of the clerk, you know, who you...
Oh, I'm Anthony, Ronald Anthony Quintana, I'm one of the managing members there at Q's Southern Bistro.
Thanks, Anthony. Any other...
No, I just appreciate your proposal.
Any other discussion? Counsel Ray.
I have any questions?
I move, I move to approve a special dispenser permit application for a concert event sponsored by Q's Bistro. Q's Southern Bistro on Pope Street, on September 1, 2012, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. License holder, Yesterday's Enterprises Inc., owner Lillian and Mark Grady, 2800 Pinos Altos Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
There's a second.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
There's a motion, a second, to approve. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Moore.
A quick question. I know at one of your events, there was questions about walking traffic, and it appears from your map that you're allowing for some walking traffic to walk by.
There it is. Sidewalk, I always forget the name of that building right across the street. Light Quest, there we go. Well, we're leaving the sidewalk open on that, on that side, because some, we're doing a cover charge on one of the sidewalks, and we have the fence on the other side, but we are allowing traffic going through on the west side sidewalk of the event. So, and we'll also be having security guards and stuff like that, ushering people, letting people know where they can walk through, and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? There's a motion, a second, to approve a special dispenser permit application for a concert event sponsored by Q's Southern Bistro on Pope Street on September 1st, 2012, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. License holders, Yesterday's Enterprises Incorporated, owner Lillian and Mark Grady, 2800 Pinos Altos Road, Silver City, New Mexico. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. The next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1208, an ordinance amending Chapter 10 Business, Article 2, 3, and 7 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code relating to business registrations, business licenses, and permits within the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. We'll see how this goes, it's got my name on it. Work with me, he'll say. This is an NOI that basically cleans up some of the language, as well as updates the fees on our business license and registrations, and... Did you want to speak, Julie?
Hi, I'm Julie Sly, code enforcement officer for the Town of Silver City, and I believe Robert was going to start out with the introduction, and then I'll just kind of highlight it for
Basically, for some time, we've noticed that the chapter, dealing with business registrations and business licenses, was a bit confusing, and in a meeting between, that I attended along with Peter Russell and Julie, and I think way back when Roger was involved as well, we brainstormed how we could make this ordinance more readable, more user-friendly, and getting, and get rid of ambiguities. So we did rewrite a good portion of Chapter 10. There is, earlier today, we noticed one gap, that there was one group of people that really was not included, so at some, at your convenience, I will suggest the change in the NOI that I would suggest, the amendment, to cover that gap. From, Julie will be able to talk about the specific changes. Most of them have to do with fee changes, and with setting apart, taking into account that we also have a peddler's and itinerant merchant, transient merchant statute that are covered elsewhere in the code, so we want to make sure that anyone who does business within the town will be properly regulated. We have also stopped separately regulating fortune tellers on palm readers. On that note, if you'd like me to suggest the change that would, the amendment that I would suggest, to fill the gap that we had discovered today, can do that now, or you can wait until, if this NOI passes, then you can wait, and we can discuss it again when the ordinance is up for consideration.
Since we're not going to regulate the other people that have extra powers, how about I read your amendment, and see if I got it?
Let's see if you can do it. I'm going to transmit the words.
I've got it. On Section 1020, we would add a final sentence. Said business registration fee shall also be imposed on all persons doing business within the town who do not have places of business established within the town. Under Section 1021 exemptions, it would be, we would add in, or are otherwise separately regulated and paying a fee under any other provision of the municipal code.
Amazing.
Isn't it? And it's no longer going to be regulated. Such a valuable tool. Julie?
Mayor, and counsel, and staff, one of the changes... Mayor and counsel and staff, one of the changes we wanted to highlight was the actual fee imposed on a business registration. Currently, it's set at $20, and this was done since the ordinance passed in 1981. We would like to hopefully recommend that it could be increased to $35 for the entire calendar year of January 1st through December 31st of every year. There are adjoining cities in the area that have started as $25 all the way up to $35. For instance, Bayard and Hurley are $35 now. I feel this is adequate to cover some of the administrative processes that we have to go through on issuing these. Several times, we have roundtable meetings, we have to review commercial site plans, we sometimes have to confer with the chief of police, often we have to confer with the fire department and other utility departments. So, it can be very time-consuming just to process one business registration or a business license. As Robert had said earlier, there's been some changes in the wording of some of the different sections, which I think you've probably read, some additions pertaining to current government-issued photo IDs, things like that that help us regulate the whole process. Another area I wanted to bring to your attention is going to be under Section 1046 of the NOI. And before, we used to only ask for a $50 deposit for cleaning fees whenever any kind of a carnival circus came through town. And we'd like to increase that to a $100 deposit, if that would be acceptable to you. And as Robert mentioned earlier, what we've done is we've considered clairvoyance, palm readers to fall underneath the circuses and things. So, we kind of simplified it to where it clarifies better, so we aren't reading the ordinance over and over and over. We also have included a very important thing as far as under, it'll be, under Section, Chapter 10, Article 7, we've included recycled dealers. And let me go into a little bit of detail on that. It's listed with secondhand dealers, junk dealers, recycled dealers, and pawnbrokers. Recycling dealers have to have a particular license from the state of New Mexico, especially if they're gonna be doing any kind of operations with moving or selling their vehicles for the metal. So, we decided to put that in there because somewhere it was kind of getting in the gray area, and people may have been doing things that they shouldn't have been doing if they weren't regulated also under a state license. So, we clarified that and cleaned up that section of the whole ordinance. What I'd like to do is just also entertain any questions you might have. Hopefully, between Peter and myself, we can answer them.
Questions? Counsel Lewis?
Just a quick question. The, the fact that these haven't been brought up in the 30 years, this brings the percentage, the APR percentage to right at 2% increase per year. Not meaning inflation, is this, is this enough for you to operate? Is it, is it adequate for you to operate from a fee standpoint, for a time standpoint?
Well, according to Section 3-38-1 under the New Mexico Statute annotated, it says that it allows for business registrations not being more than $35.
There you go.
With thanks to management help.
Counsel Madison?
I have a quick question. I've had several people in, call me concerned with businesses such as landscapers, gardeners, who don't necessarily have a physical place of business, which kind of got to the amendment that the mayor was, you know, talking about that last one, said business registration fee would be imposed on persons not having a business location in the town. So, because, so I guess my, my question is that that would cover that, hopefully, that that amendment that was made would, because there are a number of people that do register, and there are a lot of people that do not register, you know, or have a license. And the same with contractors, who I understand are under a difference, they're somewhere else in there.
Contractors also, we have been putting them under business registrations. However, we have several contractors that come from out of the area to do businesses, building sites in our town. So, that's what they would fall under. Also, what you were mentioning earlier about gardeners and landscapers, that's part of the review process we have to do because depending upon what kind of landscaping we do, they can have to maybe fall under the construction industries division to have certain licensures.
That's right.
So, we also would treat them the same way as we would the contract. They're an out-of-state, or an out-of-city, or out-of-county business that wants to come in on a regular basis, but maybe their office is located in Las Cruces, they're going to need to get that business registration with our town. And we have to try to do the best we can in making sure that they have all the proper licensure. We've also, at Peter's advice, we do have a disclosure on the business registrations and the licenses, that if anybody comes in, they are signing that application stating they have all the proper permits and licensures to do that business in our town. So, if something were to go awry, then we have something to go on as far as correcting the situation.
Thanks very much. So, I just wanted to clarify to make sure that amendment caught that. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Counsel Kirk?
Okay, Julie, on Section, Chapter 10, Article 3, Section 1046, fees, page 2, the following, let's see, you have if inspections by the town's fire chief, police chief, and/or building inspector are required or deemed to be necessary for the public welfare and safety, or because those businesses require greater supervision, those fees shall be disclosed to the applicant and shall be additional to the licensing. Now, can you just give me an example of, like, you know, just an example of how that would pertain to somebody?
Sure. We get quite a few people that do come in for, let's say they just wanted to do a little small internet business out of their home, which would fall under a home business registration. And as long as they're not having any public or clientele coming to the home, they're not gonna require a fire inspection. But the minute you have a business where you're going to have public coming to your building or your location, by all means, we have to take the precautions that that building is safe enough to house people coming in from the streets or from wherever. It's all part of protecting the town and making sure people have the adequate protection for themselves as the business owners. That would be one indication where we will have the fire marshal go out and do a physical fire inspection of the place. Now, his fee is set at $25 right now. That is up to the fire department if they decide to do something later with that. As far as our building inspector, now that's, that's a very good point there. If there is somebody that wants to open up, let's say, a commercial site, and they're gonna do some few changes to the building, remodel, take down a wall, add a room, by gosh, we gotta have, get our building inspector involved in that because he has to make sure that they have a proper certificate of occupancy to allow us to issue the registration so they can do business.
Do you want to add anything, Peter? You did very well, Julie. Does this address the pawnbroker bond? It removes that bond requirement to the town?
No, no, it does not remove the bond requirement. There's an issue of where it should be deposited because the municipal courts don't have the ability to execute on a bond. It's a civil action. It would end up being in the magistrate court or the district court. So, what we're saying is he deposits the bond with us, name the Town of Silver City as the, and the people within the town as the beneficiaries of this bond, and we'll hold on to it. And if we, and it's hard to imagine the situation where we, the town would actually get involved. If there was a civil action against a particular pawnbroker that involved the Town of Silver City, we'd be able to take this bond and execute on it. We'd notify the, the company that issued the bond that we're making the claim. And they pay, if it was justified, they paid the claim, then the bond payer would then try to recover his money from the pawnbroker who bought the bond to begin with. So, the only issue with that was really where do we deposit it?
Any comments from the audience? Seeing then, any further comments, questions from the council? Do you want this?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance, a notice of intent ordinance number 1208 and ordinance amending Chapter 10 Business Articles 2, 3, and 7 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code relating to business registrations, business licenses, and permits within the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, with the following amendments. Add the final sentence, add, it's the last sentence, be added to 1020. Is it 10 dash 20? Now, unfortunately, I closed my thing there. 10 dash 20, fee imposed. Said business registration fee shall also be imposed upon all persons doing business within the town who do not have places of business established within the town. And add the following to 10 dash 21 exemption. Let me make sure I do this right. Okay. Or are otherwise separately regulated and paying a fee under any other provision of the municipal code.
I'll second it. To approve NOI 1208. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion and a second, no further discussion to approve notice of intent ordinance number 1208. As amended, an ordinance amending Chapter 10 Business Articles 2, 3, and 7 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code relating to business registrations, business licenses, and permits within the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, with the amendments that have been read twice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1210 and ordinance amending the municipal code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, Chapter 28, for municipal court, Article 4, initiation of proceedings, sentencing, fine, and court costs. And I believe this basically puts in a $100 fee for a warrant fee, which is consistent with other jurisdictions and courts. Judge?
Counsel Mayor, I'm here before the court because at my last judicial training, we get an annual training, we received advice from the Judicial Education Center that municipal judges should work on reducing the number of times that we use contempt of court in our courts. And that we should, when we have municipalities like ours who have the privilege of imposing fines and fees that are not inconsistent with state statute, that we use those powers to ensure that we have a bench warrant fee instead of using contempt. Because currently, this is not one of the procedures I put into place, but I've been with the court 12 years. And in the 12 years, that has been so. Whenever a bench warrant is issued within municipal court, we add a contempt of court charge to that offense. That is a separate criminal offense. And so, it gets a separate docket, and it, because it is a punishable offense, up to a $500 fine, zero to 90 days in jail. If a person chooses to enter a plea of not guilty, they're entitled to, if I'm going to consider jail, they're entitled to representation, legal representation, they're entitled to a hearing, they have full appellate rights. And we basically, municipal courts use contempt as a bench warrant fee. So, I'm before you here tonight to ask for a bench warrant fee because we do have the privilege of passing an ordinance like that. And to save contempt of court for acts that are truly contemptuous, such as the outright failure to follow a lawful order of the court, for behavior that's inappropriate in the court. Because we are actually creating a criminal offense, these, this contempt of court charge goes on someone's record. You will show that you have had a contempt of court charge if you're convicted of this. This also, by adding a bench warrant fee, will streamline the process for defendants who have to come into municipal court who have warrants. If a defendant currently now has not had a case adjudicated, and they walk in off the street, and I'm in trial or I'm not available at the time, they have to be sent away and come back at another time when I am available, or they have to make actual court appearance before me so that they can be advised of their rights on that contempt charge. They have to be fully arraigned on those charges. If we streamline this process by passing a bench warrant fee, the standard contempt charge, when it's not a direct contempt in our court, we've used a $100 contempt fee. And that's when we generate a warrant and the warrant served. With having a bench warrant fee assessed automatically with the issuance of a warrant, the defendants can come in off the street, come to the clerks at the front window and say, I just want to pay my fines and fees, there's a $100 bench warrant fee, they pay that, that money goes into the general fund, and, and they're good to go. They won't have appellate rights on that, they, we don't have to give them an attorney or follow that whole process. I'm not proposing that this issue is going to make more money for the municipality. Actually, it probably will reduce the taxpayer cost a little bit because we don't have to have the hearings, and we don't have to appoint attorneys if they choose to, to have that as an option to them. I'm simply saying that we are going to streamline that process by having an automatic bench warrant fee. That, again, is not inconsistent with state statute because metro courts, metro courts, district courts, and magistrate courts currently charge that by default, and that's allowed as per state statute. So, what I'm requesting from the council today is that they just streamline our process so that we can truly treat contemptuous behavior with a contempt charge and not just the simple issuance of a, not that it's simple, I shouldn't say it that way, but the issuance of a bench warrant automatically to, to have another criminal charge. The, the proposed ordinance will allow that $100 to go into the general fund, and that could be used for any number of, of needs within the municipality. Currently, the contempt fine is, is treated as a fine, so it, too, goes into the general fund, but it, it's a longer process to get there to the contempt of court charge. Are there any questions? Did I leave anything out, Robert?
How do you like being on this side of this? How do you like being on this side of this?
I get to wear a black dress. You don't.
I almost did.
You almost did.
Any comments, questions from the council? Any questions, comments from the audience?
I also wanted to add very quickly is that I still have the ability to waive that bench warrant fee. I would still have the ability to do that if someone has, you know, a good cause for not having appear before the court. I can still waive that. It's not automatically default. I can still use my judgment on that. And so, not everyone would have to pay it if they're not, if they have a good reason for not having come before the court.
Any other discussion? Entertained a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Maron.
I move for approval of notice of intent ordinance number 1210, an ordinance amending the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, chapter 28, municipal court, article 4, initiation of proceedings, sentencing, fine, and court costs.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion, a second, to approve notice of intent ordinance 1210. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion, a second, to approve notice of intent to adopt ordinance 1210, amending the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, chapter 28, municipal court, article 4, initiation of proceedings, sentencing, fines, and court costs. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge. The next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of resolution number 201221, adopting the goal of reaching a 33% recycling rate and taking such steps as are necessary to reach this goal. Dr. Timmy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, staff, Terry Timmy from the Office of Sustainability. And the last time I was here to talk about a resolution, I was asking your approval of a resolution to submit a grant to the Mexico Recycling Coalition. And we, I'm pleased to announce that the town did receive that grant. That was for $193,500, mainly for capital improvements in the recycling operations. That equipment is due here within a week or two. Another part of the grant that we received had a task that we develop a plan to bring Silver City to a higher recycling rate matching that of the nation. Currently, our recycling rate in all of the Southwest Solid Waste Authority District is only 8.5%. Silver City by itself has a 10.5% recycling rate. So, we have quite a task ahead of us to increase that to 33% within the next five years, but we've developed a recycling plan that I believe will help us reach that goal within the next five years. And we have copies of that strategic recycling plan, and I'd be happy to address any of the issues in there with you. If you have any questions.
Any comments, questions from the audience? Entertained a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move to approve resolution number 2012 dash 21, adopting the goal of reaching a 33% recycling rate and taking such steps as are necessary to reach this goal. Sorry.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, a second, to approve resolution 201221. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion, a second, no further discussion, to approve resolution 2012 dash 21, adopting the goal of reaching a 33% recycling rate and taking such steps as are necessary to reach this goal. Roll call, please.
Counselor Maron.
Aye.
Counselor Bennett.
Aye.
Counselor Bennett.
Aye.
Counselor Bennett.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. It's a good part about being so far down a long agenda is... Does anybody even want to do the next one?
No.
You do? You have to go to the bathroom?
No.
Approval, disapproval of request for proposal number 12 slash 13 dash 1P, Legal Services. Mr. Brown.
The town received one bid for RFP 12 slash 13 dash 1P for legal services. It's from Mr. Scavron, and it's staff recommendation that we award the RFP to Mr. Scavron.
Any comments, questions? I'm going to comment. I find Mr. Scavron to be, don't get all happy, you don't know what I'm going to say. I think your years of experience have brought such an asset to the community and to the council, to the town as a whole. It's one thing to have a lawyer that's skilled in litigation and spends their days in court. It's another to have what we have and are fortunate to have as a lawyer who takes a proactive approach, gives sound advice, although lengthy, and keeps us out of court, and keeps our litigation costs down, and makes sure that we're not only doing sound business practice, but legal, and in the intent of the law as well as what's black and white. And I really appreciate that. I don't think with a less of a lawyer that I could have continued to run for office. You've been a major part of my decisions in staying on the council, so everybody can blame me when I leave too. But just, it's truly an honor that I support your proposal to retain your services as the town's attorney, and I don't think we could have found a better candidate had we done a national search. And I am very honored to support this proposal and the staff recommendation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bettison.
I second your statement, and I'd like to make a motion. But do you want to hear that? Well, let me make a motion, then you can ask another discussion. I move to approve request proposal number 12 slash 13 dash 1P, Legal Services, per staff's recommendation to Robert L. Scavron, PC.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, a second, to approve staff recommendation for RFP 12 dash 13 dash 1P, Counselor Cook.
Okay, I'm new at this, so I have some questions, and it's nothing to do with you personally, it's only because I don't know how the whole process works. And the only thing I got was this notice saying that I need have recommended you, and but how much are we paying you? Because, you know, what'd you bid? I mean, I wouldn't want to be okaying something like a million dollars for your services, no offense, that you're not worth it, but, you know, I think the town doesn't have that kind of money. And then, how long is it? I mean, I'm kind of confused just getting something that says, yeah, we approve you for I don't know how long, or how much, or any of that.
What's the next 15 minutes?
Well, exactly. I mean, I don't know.
Yes, we, what happens next is I enter into negotiations with Mr. Scavron. The negotiations have to fall within the set budget that has been approved by the town council, and has to comply with our state and our county code. And contracts normally do not exceed past four years, but we can extend them at times.
Any other discussion? Counselor Maron.
Just for further clarification, that means that there isn't the, like, we're not awarding a very specific contract, we're awarding the ability to negotiate a contract. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second, and no further discussion, to approve staff recommendation for RFP 12 slash 13 dash 1P for legal services to Robert L. Scavron, PC. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Negotiate in good faith, please. The next item on the agenda is appointment of counselors to museum board and Grand County Regional Dispatch Authority. And at this point, granted it's mid-year, and I don't typically do this, the museum board is currently held by Counselor Ray, and the Grand County Regional Dispatch Authority is currently held by Counselor Bettison, with myself as the alternate. At this point, I would like to change the order and make Counselor Bettison the appointee to the museum board, and myself as the primary appointee to the Grand County Regional Dispatch, with Counselor Ray being my alternate. Is there any objection from the council?
No, sir.
Hearing none, those appointments take effect immediately. The next item on the agenda is appointment to museum board. And we have one applicant, and myself, the chair and staff for the museum have considered the application. He comes with a positive recommendation from all, and I would like to appoint with council consensus, Mr. Ronald L. Fair. Is there any objection?
No, sir.
Can I have a written name on Google over there?
Yes. There is, hearing no objection, Mr. Fair is duly appointed to the museum board, and she'll be notified. The next item on the agenda is request for removal of a member from the Planning and Zoning Commission due to non-attendance. The Land Use Code states that regarding attendance of meetings for members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, failure to attend any three of 12 meetings shall be considered just cause and grounds for removal of that member. For this reason, the chair has requested that Mr. Tafoya be removed from the commission so that we may begin advertising to fill this position. I do not take this lightly. Mr. Tafoya has, we have made numerous attempts to contact him. It has created a problem within the P&amp;Z Commission, as makes it more difficult for them to reach a quorum and address the town business, which can cause an enormous hardship on the parties that have business before the commission. I think it is very important that Mr. Tafoya's position be returned to vacant and that we fill it promptly. And if there's no objection from the council, I will remove Mr. John Tafoya from Planning and Zoning Commission.
No objection.
No objection.
Hearing none. Mr. Tafoya is no longer a planning and zoning commissioner, and that position is vacant. And I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
I second it. There's a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.